This project, it's all verified. It's not just, you know, we go and ask and they give it to us. We're not that good. It's gotta be verified according to their regulations from the state. And at the time when we inception, at the inception of the project, it was federal monies, but now it's all state. We had a health nuisance identified by the Texas Department of Health. There is obviously a danger of septic tanks and then flooding in the areas that are, that are taken care of whenever we get rid of septic tanks in these, in these areas. One of the things, it's easy to identify down in the areas, there's a lot of clay soils which are not permeable, so whenever it floods out there, the water stays on the surface and floods into the septic tanks and backs up into the homes or stays on the ground and it's dangerous for, for children. This is the nuisance finding that the State Department found for the project during this report process. These next couple of slides are just stuff I pulled off the internet and I'm gonna end up with one that's kinda close to home. But the, the danger of, of septic tanks is a reality. These are different areas around the nation. This is not just local. This is an area in Ohio where a child died from falling into a septic tank. One here I found in Yuma, Arizona. Parents were actually responsible in this case. Another one in New Jersey. Tyler fell into, into a septic tank and drowned. And then this one is close to home. This one actually was a file, in my files, an email that I had sent out to one of our consultants who's working on the project. That yellow area marked is off of Oklahoma Road. That's where a child died from falling into a septic tank. We were in the design process when this happened, so it was a really, it was really hard to, to see how, you know, if we would've been further down the road with the process, maybe that wouldn't have happened. But this kinda close to home and, and this is a verification that, you know, if we, when we take care of this situation, getting rid of septic tanks in these areas, a lot of them will be decommissioned when we actually do the connections. And that's part of the process that's required by the state for, when they give us the funding, they require us to decommission septic tanks. Back to the timeline, the execution of the, the contract for engineering, the engineering procurement and a lot of, a lot of the, the stuff that was, that was done to get to the, where we're at now was, was done with P U B in-kind money. A lot of these projects, the, the reason why they take so long is because they stay on the shelf and funding stops at the, you know, at the, at the state level. Sometimes they cut off funding because of programs and budgets, as we have been discussing here today already. What we did, when we have done, P U B has done a lot of in-kind investment to keep this project going over the years. And we're fortunate, and I'm fortunate, to be able to work with an administration that, that sees a need and, and gives us the support to do so. So, as you go down to 2006 where we executed a contract, that was actually done by, by, on our own dime with P U B to make the investment to move forward with this project. Over in 2008, we actually were awarded a million six hundred thousand for the actual design and that was, that was done by a consulting firm here locally. So we, we made the selection and revised the facility plan, revised the E I D because it was, if you see the timeline, there's a lot of time between the final report, the environmental document and where we're at here with the, with the design. This is just showing the award was given to us in 2008, April 2008. Back to the design, I mean, the timeline, the construction actually, we, we submitted an application here recently. The design took a couple of years to, to get complete in coordination with several different local agencies and areas. Engineering had already been approved by the Water Development Board by, by November 30th and we submitted an application. This was again, it was not a timeline that the Water Development Board put on us, we put it on ourselves to make sure that we were moving forward with the project. And so there we arrived to the $24 million grant that we just really, that we recently got. Comes with a small portion of a loan, but fortunately, like I said, our administration sees that the 840,000 is a, a small investment that we can make to gain that grant of $24 million to benefit the people of the local community. This is a timeline, sorry it's not that legible, but the, my purpose here is to show you that the idea is we're gonna be bidding this project out with three different contractors is the intentions. This is what the local, our consultant has proposed. And we would propose to start construction in January, February and March of 2013 and end construction at the bottom there, you can see is March, April and May of 2015. And then finally, the timeline includes all these development phases. There's actually 11 areas that we're gonna be doing the construction part, going back to the view that you see here of the, of the area. Now, like I said, the infrastructure in place, it's all good, but if we don't have connections to homes, which is ultimately the purpose of the project, that it's all for naught. And involved in that process, and this is primarily for the presentations to the residents, we're gonna need to acquire some easements, which again will be in-kind money from P U B. So along the way, we are putting some money into acquiring easements and, and getting these areas that are, this areas are south, these areas are south of 802 and these are private roads that are not identified as, as right-of-way that we would have to go in there and get easements so that we can access people. There's several of these lots have multiple homes on them that are hard to read from, reach from just the, the right-of-way, so these easements are necessary to serve everybody, make sure that we get everybody served. These are areas south of Boca Chica. The grant actually for the connections to connect all the homes actually comes through the county. And that's where ultimately we work real close with the county planning department and we've come before in a several, in a similar project with the Valle de Mosa, Valle Escondido project to do the same thing successfully, I might add. We did that successfully and, and it was, it was a great achievement. The grant actually pays for the home connection and in answer to a lot of people's questions, the grant, when people qualify for it at the state, the state has their regulations and it's all based on actually income regarding the median household income in the area. It pays for the, the connection, any fees that, that the utility requires to connect and the removal of the septic tank on each property. So that, and that's a requirement by the funding source, Texas Agricultural, so that they give us the money and we make sure that we're doing everything complete, taking out the, the septic tanks. And finally, last but not least, there's a, actually to get all these funds, one of the, one of the key items that we had to achieve to get, to get this funding moving from the Water Development Board is we had to establish in place a mandatory hookup policy for the, for the project areas that does mandate people to hook up. They figure the state, in so many words, you know, we're gonna give you the grant money and it's, it's beneficial to the people, we've already proven that. We mandate that people connect to the, to the system, okay? And that's something that we've been in communication with Commissioner Navias and the local county health department as far as enforcement, because at our level, the P U B is not an enforcement agency, we just do the project, but, but there is a mandatory hookup policy in effect for the project area. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. My goal was to try to answer as many questions up front with this presentation as possible.
David, thank you very much. Appreciate you doing this and I wish that we had more inter-agency communications where you come and bring everybody up to speed. Just a couple of comments and then a question.
Yes, sir.
On the, and I guess it's just a, 'cause I hear it frequently, like most of us on here about taxpayer money and when, when you talk about, this is P U B money, at the end of the day, it's, it's ratepayer money.
Yes, it is.
That is being utilized, let's, let's keep that in mind. Secondly, on, on these, on these infrastructure projects that, that you're doing, it's important to note how this is going to affect, I mean, we know how it's gonna affect the, the rural areas in terms of replacing septic tanks with, with water, wastewater lines, but how does it affect the, the ratepayer in terms of how, you know, is that rate gonna go up in order to subsidize this?
Okay. That's a very good question. That's why there's, the majority of the project is a grant. The way the agreement involved between the, the Water Development Board and Brownsville P U B is that we, since we do not have a coordination with El Hadidin to, to collect fees for us regarding the water consumption, we've established a flat rate that will be administered in this project area.
Just, just in that area, not, not spread out to the whole?
Yes, just specific for this, this particular area. The way the, the agreement reads is that for the projects that the Water Development Board are funding in this area, we have a flat rate established because we do not have the, the coordination with El Hadidin to base the rate on water consumption. If we can ever get to that road where we, and we've tried in the past unsuccessfully, if we never get to that where we can establish an inter-local agreement to do that, then it would, it'd be based on the water consumption like it is everywhere else. But the purpose of the mandatory hookup policy as well is for the Water Development Board to realize that, that we're getting, paying for the maintenance of the system from the project area. And so that the rest of the, the ratepayers do not have to burden the cost of the maintenance of this particular area. And that's why we have, that's why they've established a mandatory hookup policy so that it's paying for itself, it, through the rates administered in the project area.
And secondly, the, if you haven't planned to do so, I encourage you to make the same presentation to other governmental entities. School district is a, you know, that's, I don't know, I don't know what the percentage is of, of B I S D folks that live in that particular project area, but the more you can get this information out via, you know, this, this way or through TV, it's better. I appreciate what you're doing, but I would go to B I S D, T S C and the Port of Brownsville and give exactly what, what you did here, just so everyone's on the same page.
Yes, sir.
If you can do that. That's all I have. Commissioners?
I wanted to thank David for coming. When I came on board, the project at Valle Escondido had begun and we had several meetings out at, in the Salado area. And it was, I think it was P U B's first attempt to do this and we, we ran into some glitches. One was that people who, who were able to hook up or allocated funds to hook up then didn't want to decommission the septic tanks. And so when David came to me this time that, to let me know that this 24 million had been received, I talked to him about it and I said, "What is it that we need to do to go ahead?" Because I mean, is it fair that only some people get to choose to connect and, and they're paying their share and others don't? Of course, what we are bound by, and we brought in Gus Salinas from the Health Department, no, it's not Gus Salinas, Gus.
Olivares.
Olivares, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
And he, he talked, we all talked and we need to amend the ordinance as it reads right now because, you know, all these monies that are coming down to better the quality of life for our residents in the rural areas, we need to be able to enforce what we are now providing for them. And, well, the Texas Water Quality Board. So later on, David and I and, and the judge and possibly the Health Department need to sit down with our legal department and see what it is that we need to do to be able to amend our ordinance, to be able to enforce this. But I was at a meeting Tuesday night with David Avrigo regarding this. I've already set in motion to be able to meet in different schools in, in my precinct because all of this is gonna be done in Precinct One in southeast Brownsville, so I appreciate all the hard work that you do and Frank Bejarano's office also is involved in this, so thank you and hopefully we'll be able to make this a... Now, one of the things that was brought up was the East Loop. How is it going to affect, or was it going to affect the hookups and whatnot? So like the judge said, I urge you to go ahead and, and meet with the R M A, the City of Brownsville on this East Loop project so that...
We're very fortunate to have a good consultant company, local company that, that is well-informed with all of the goings-on with the city, the county, and they're considering all that development. As of right now, I was in a meeting not more than two weeks ago where at current, the, the construction of the East Loop is gonna stop at our southmost, right before Southmost turns into Oklahoma out there for right now. The alternative routes that, that are being presented for that East Loop, I've sent in meetings for that one and they should, it, it, it's not gonna conflict with what we're doing and we're, we're aware of where we need to locate the lines and we're gonna be working real closely with the county in that respect to, to make sure that we're putting lines where we don't have to go back and remove them.
Okay.
The P U B did reach out to, to the R M A and we provided them with the preliminary schematics of both projects, the one starting at the Veterans Bridge and the one going, leading to the port. So they have those documents.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one issue with the, I would hope that our, our ordinance would mirror the City of Brownsville because it's a ETJ issue.
Yes, sir.
The city has an ordinance in place that basically covers mandatory hookups. So I would assume through our Health Department, we have, we have no choice but to follow that. And the other comment I would make, a comment of what Commissioner Sanchez said a couple of weeks ago, the best thing that could happen to the East Loop is sewer lines out there to spur economic development along that East Loop all the way to the port, so I think that's gonna be a big benefit to Precinct One. I'm also gonna benefit from this because the easternmost part of my precinct is gonna get some of this sewer connection and the people are very happy about it, that know about it already, so thank you very much.
Great. I appreciate all your comments, just a, one last, just note, we're doing, we're working concurrently on, on another colonial project out on 281, Via, the Via Nueva area, for whoever is over that area, it's.
That's right.
It's now an expat city. We, we will be going before the Water Development Board for the potential of receiving a $2 million grant for that construction. And that's going on in June, but again, it follows the same process, that's why it's been over a time that we've developed the project. So I, I've, since my inception, this is the first, one of the first projects I ever worked with at P U B, so I've cut my teeth on this and I've earned my way all the way through, that's why I can probably tell you this information in my sleep. But I see it as an, as a, as a positive light from this area out to the area, to the state, to the state agencies that we are doing something positive for the people here in the area. I appreciate all your comments and they're well-received and we will take them into account. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I've got a couple. How much of this project, and you know, I'm commissioner from the north end of the county, how much of this project is county versus city?
There's a, as far as the location you mean?
The area covered?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a very, back to the, the initial map of the colonias, Stewart.
Percentage-wise?
Yeah, percentage-wise, it's probably about 70, 30. There's, because some of the areas already grown into the, into this colonial areas.
70 being city, 30 being county?
70 county, 70 county and 30 part city.
And 30 cities. So the ordinance that was passed by Mayor Vela only covers 30% of that area?
Actually, in the language in that ordinance, it, it talks about the city Cameron County as well. I mean, it's a, it's, it's, it's anywhere that the P U B can serve is the way the, and P U B can serve within the city or with outside the city. Our ETJ extends beyond, beyond the city limit, so...
No, no, I understand that, but the mayor can only pass an ordinance that covers the city.
Okay, they only covers the city, okay.
Right?
And I guess that's why we're needing to amend the county ordinance.
Sure. So 70% is county?
Right.
Okay. My other question is, if people don't decide to hook up right now, and right now being when it comes available?
Sure.
And then a year or two down the road, they wanna do it, is that grant money gonna be available to take the old septic systems out and do all the connections?
No, sir. That's a good question and it's a very important point to make. We have a limited time with which to exhaust these funds or they pull it back. The Water Development Board keeps real close watch on our, on our invoices and payments in the, in the project, during the project. All they report to, we gotta, we spend the money first, then they reimburse us, that's how it works. And we have, like within, in the case of the connections, we've had that situation before and this is the funds that we get through the county, state agency through the county. We have two years with which to complete the project and if, and if we're not done, then they pull the money back. And the people that, that we don't, we've had this situation before, we don't wanna get into any type of legal situation with the, between the contractor and the homeowner or us and the homeowner, so we've moved forward in connecting those people who want to get connected first. The people that don't, they get left out. So it becomes a responsibility of their own and it comes out of their pocket. But we've let them know and that's why these public meetings are so important, that people attend. On the meeting that we had on Tuesday, I let everybody know, encourage them to let other people know to come out there and participate. It's important.
So in this area, do you currently provide a water service, just not sewer?
No, sir. And like I was saying, the, the part, the 30%, there's some area in there that P U B does have lines, but the majority of this area is serviced by El Hadidin water.
Okay. And so you'll just be providing the sewer cost, not the water service and cost?
That, that's right.
Okay. And I don't know if you've thought about this, but because we're county and we're rural, we have subdivision rules and there's people that live in the county right now that have lived there for years. And I've run into this project, this project issues in my precinct with the North Alamo Water Supply Corporation where, you know, I have someone that's been living there 18, 20 years. There's now water service, they wanna connect, but their property's not subdivided. So now they have to figure out, how do they go through the subdivision process, are they gonna have to pay that money to then connect utilities? And so that's something that I think legal needs to take a look at and see how we can figure out, especially since we're getting these state funds, if there's a way to get a variance or a way to get around having to quote "subdivide" when someone owns property. Because someone may have purchased a piece of property, never subdivided it, but they've been living on it for years and these utility companies like yours, before they can connect, they need to, because of the state subdivision rules, need to get a subdivision plat which will cost the taxpayer money to go out and do. Do you have funds that would cover that cost or is there a way to get a waiver of some sort?
First of all, it works backwards in this case. The fund, the E D E P fund was specifically developed because back in 89 when they passed all the subdivision rules, they realized a lot of these colonias got left out and were not subdivided. And so that's the purpose of, of these, of these funds, to serve those areas. We don't go and check plats of these areas, we realize they're identified as colonias with the state and that's why we had the identification of the colonias, where the state knows they're colonias, they're not subdivided, so the, there is no verification need to serve these areas with the sewer. And the, the subdivision rules that apply, of course now require that some, that, that there is water and sewer before property is sold for residential use. And that's why this project comes in, that's why these funds come in, because those areas that, that've been left out for years serve to, to provide sewer and utility, water and sewer utility to these areas. So we don't, we don't require subdivision plats. Matter of fact, the Water Development Board has checked us to make sure that we have in-process at the city and county level, that we, we do have those subdivision rules and they are being implemented before we sell properties. Now, they don't check the project areas, they're just checking that we have that, that, that vehicle in place so that, so that it doesn't happen in the future.
Okay. Well, I mean, 'cause theoretically, let's say one of these properties you put in the sewer and they have water, but then they decide to sell to someone else five years down the road. When that new person comes to buy, before you can connect them, you're gonna wanna see a subdivision plat, aren't you, if it's still county? Are you just gonna connect service?
No, we just connect based on, on their, their sub, it's not necessarily, whenever, in these areas of the colonias, we don't check subdivisions before we connect them.
Regardless of there's new purchasers coming in?
I have never seen that, that, we, we just provide an availability letter to the county to, to make sure at the county level that all that, all that is taken care of.
Okay. Well, that's something that I think legal needs to, to clear to make sure we're doing it right, 'cause if we're gonna require or impose upon people, "Hey, you need to connect to the sewer," and they're gonna have to go out of pocket and spend five or six thousand to subdivide their property that they've lived on for years, I don't think that's gonna be very fair either.
That's a very good point to make and, and we'll definitely consider that when we, when we discuss the, the ordinance amendment. But as, as of today, in the project that we successfully completed, we have never, that I know of, required anybody to provide us their plat, for this project now. On the regular, you know, subdivisions that we service, new subdivision developments, all of that has to be checked out. But for these projects, we had, we have not, for the colonias, we have not asked for...
Commissioner, those are, those are excellent points and I think that where you addressed, where we need to address that is not only with legal, but our engineering department as well. There, the subdivision rules that we follow pretty much are state rules and any amendment or ordinance that we need to do, I know we can do an ordinance, but you know, whatever we need to change in that, we gotta make sure that you're involved and, and our engineering department is involved. Because they do cross over. I've had phone calls about people having problems with not getting permits because it falls under a ETJ or with us. We just had one recently in Harlingen, a couple of days ago, that Mr., our engineer, Mr. Inahosa took care of, or somebody in his office took care of. So we need to set that up, as soon as you think it's reasonable to set that up, whenever you're ready, please contact Commissioner Inahosa and you get with legal so we can set that up so we can workshop it, because those questions are gonna apply to, to your area as well at some point. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Lastly, I just wanna thank you because $25 million is a lot of money that, you know, we wouldn't be able to raise taxes to get that money to provide these services. So I think you need to make sure that you let the residents in the area know, "Hey, this is a one-time thing, the money's been granted to us from the state to do this and we're not gonna get another opportunity." You know, the costs are just gonna increase for you. But I mean, this is a clear example of how working diligently, we're, you know, increasing our infrastructure at a cost not really to the local taxpayers. I mean, 800,000 on 25 and a half million is really nothing. So I applaud your efforts, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a team effort, we have a very supportive administration that has allowed us to do this and, and our finances as well. And that's something that I've encouraged, even those people that do not qualify for the grant to the actual home connection, I've let them know, you know, there's infrastructure out here that you didn't have to pay for to extend to get your sewer, you just had to come out of pocket. For those that, that are, the state says are qualified to pay on their own, they just have to come out of pocket to pay for the actual connection. But the infrastructure and the amount of $24 million was brought out for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Reese, did you have a question? This is not a public hearing, but I'll let you ask a quick question.
I would like to inform the commission and the, and the county judge and the public that there are so many, many issues that have to be addressed and the citizens have to be taken in consideration because we're the one that makes the decisions. In order for you to obtain extraterritorial jurisdiction, you have to have a referendum and place it in vote for the people that you're going to annex. In the, these colonias you're talking about, I'm not familiar with any colonias on 802 and 509, but that's okay. So the people that you're going to annex, you have to place a adamant referendum. This happened in Riverbend and the law says strictly that both parties, the ones that are going to be annexed, for example, the citizens of Brownsville want to also say, "Well, we don't want to annex them. Even though we have extraterritorial jurisdiction, we don't have to." Now, the jurisdiction of the P U B in its charter that was formed in 1960 has not been amended to say, as we have been growing, you know, back in the old days, the city of Mr. Brownsville were up there where Tex-Mex was. Now we have it over there by Port Isabel. Now we have it over there to Arroyo City. Now we have it over there to Ranchito. All this has been done without the blessings of the people of Brownsville and the law strictly says that you have to place it in referendum on both sides. Now, number one. Number two, the City of Brownsville spent $900,000 to look into the issue of impact fees. Now, a lot of these permits were purchased prior to the approval of the impact fees for the amount of monies that they're going to be increased. The developers purchased hundreds and hundreds of permits at $200 or whatever, the minimum. Because now, for you to connect concerning the impact fees, your water meter is gonna cost how much or...
About 13 million dollars?
Well, maybe more. You see, we have to look at, now we, what is the responsibility of the developer? You see, we have to look at, now, what is the responsibility of the developer? You see, we already paved the way for them on military with the veteran school. We already, we have never, and we have had it here in the interior of our city and our county, right next door. We never did anything for Cameron Park. They had to get their own sewer, their own water, their everything. I remember in 1979, we went to Lampago to a meeting when Emilio Hernandez was the mayor, so that southwest water, whatever it is over there on Military Highway, would give water to the people of Cameron Park. Now, these colonias, there are certain rules that apply to colonias. But what I'm trying to, to inform this board is to say, look, the people of Brazos has to be involved in the decision-making of this. Because you know what, the rates right now, water, for example, at the country club, they don't have meters. But we do have meters. Now, we, right now, the PUB is changing meters. I don't know how long have you been doing that? How many meters are you going to change?
If, excuse me, if we can just get back, because the...
What I'm trying to say, sir, is that, before you know it, what you just said through right now, sir, is that before we know it, we're not going to be able to afford, the people are not going to be, these people that are going to be living in these rural areas, which also, you know, by the same token, the moment that they have extraterritorial jurisdiction, extraterritorial jurisdiction, the county is out of the picture.
Well, that's not necessarily accurate. The, I did not hear the word, and I don't want to get into this discussion today.
Okay, but how about making this, have some public hearings for the people so they can participate?
Well, I think, I think, I think that's what, that's what we're talking about, having additional presentations to other governmental entities. Number two, the word annexation never came up. The ETJ is not something that, that we control or the city controls. That, that is established by state law. So the ETJ is already there. We did not talk about annexation. My question was the impact on the rate payer as, as a whole. And I did hear that there was going to be an increase to the rate payer, but we will have other discussions at some future date and I think those are valid points, but today is not the proper arena for that.
Fine, Judge, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that, that the, the official entities are aware, that the public has to be informed, we have to put it up for debate and things like that, you know, because right now, sir, everything is so exorbitant. We don't have jobs. People don't have any money to eat. The elevation of taxes and things like that, you know, we have to look at the picture in its entirety, sir. That's all I'm requesting. Thank you.
All right, and we appreciate that. And you'll be, you know, they're going to have the same presentation, I would hope, at, at the other governmental entities to keep the people informed and, you know, you can lead the water to drink, but you can't make them drink. So I appreciate you being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the comments.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, so by saying aye in each of those carries. Item B, 2011-2012 mid-year budget review.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. As we do every year, when we reach the mid-year point in our, in our budget to action and our revenues and expenditures, we prepare a court, a report to Commissioner's Court so we can give them an update on where we are as opposed to budget and where we anticipate any, any, if we expect any overages and expenses and how our revenues are doing. So this is a regular report that we present every, every year around this time to Commissioner's Court. If, you should have it in front of you, if you go to page one of the report, that was emailed out to the court and I believe you also have it in front of you. The first two pages that you see are going to be the, the revenue projection for the fiscal year. And basically, your first few line items are revenue transfers that come in. If you'll go to the Veterans Bridge, Los Indios and Gateway Bridge Transfer, those are projected to come in, when you summarize them, the three bridges together, probably to exceed our budgeted revenue by, our budgeted transfer by about 2.42%. I anticipate that Veterans Bridge will, will exceed by about 15%. Los Indios Bridge is going to be a little bit under, we had budgeted 274,000 and at the rate the revenues are coming in, we will probably come barely, we'll probably barely reach the 200,000 for the year. Gateway Transfer is expected to, to meet our, our projection at 3.7. Last year, at this same time, in 2011, up through, up through March, our revenues, or rather, up through April, our transfers were, revenue was at 8.4 million. And this year, at this same time, we're at 8.7 million. So our actual revenue is up total for the, for the toll bridge operations, they're up to about 4%. The traffic that we see increasing as far as we can see is the five axle and your six axle traffic crossings are up. And our automobile is up and down every month. We attribute the increase in revenue to the adjustment that was done in the toll rates. So the majority, that is where the, most of the traffic is increased that we are seeing come from.
If we remove the toll rates, are we about the same?
If you decrease them?
If we would go back to what it was, we're pretty much the same?
Yes, uh-huh.
So the traffic volume hasn't increased?
The traffic volume has not increased too much for your vehicles. Your commercial traffic is what seems to be showing an increase. And of course, since the rates were increased, that, that, we attribute that to our revenue increase that we are seeing. So overall, the, I anticipate the bridge transfers will probably exceed our projection by about 2.4%. Then we go down to, you'll see a summation of, by each department on the revenues. For the most part, it appears that we will be meeting our revenue. You'll see reproduction, which is Department 104160, that is anticipated to, to be at 78% at the end of the year, not at 100%. The county clerk judicial expected to come in at 93% of what was budgeted. Our fine revenues, for some reason, appear to be a little bit lower. You have the trial courts, which I anticipate will come in at 87% of what was budgeted. Juror fees are not, juror fees were anticipated, were, we knew that we're going to drop and we projected a decrease, however, at the rate we're going right now, it does not appear that we will meet our, our, our budget. So we anticipate those, the trial courts to be at 87% of the, of the projection. Your JP revenues are probably going to be anywhere from 10 to 15% higher than we thought they would be. And those have been summed up together. So while you do have some JPs that it appears that they will increase, or rather, that they will exceed their budget, some will not meet their budget based on what we're seeing right now. And revenues were projected at year-end at, on a conservative basis. We have a number of JP offices that are up for election and once the election is over, well, if I take the actual revenues of March and say, this is where the revenue is right now, so they should be at this rate in, at the end of September, since there's an election process that's in place. I, I did that and then where there's opponents, I decreased it down to about 85% of what, you know, because it's very difficult at this point to gauge if, based on the outcome of the election of the operation, the continued operation of the office. So that, some of these may exceed, however, I try to be conservative to where we would at least be able to, to come up with a, with a reasonable projection. If you go to page two on the revenues, the constable offices, they were summed up in, each, each operation acts independently, but I took a summary and the same concept there was used, that was used for the JPs and projections. For example, we have JP 5, which is doing very well right now, as of March, they were at 95,700 in revenue and we had budgeted, I had budgeted 107,000 for the year. So my, my estimate where they will end at year, at year-end will be 153,000. Now, you know, if I do a simple calculation and double up what it was in March, that would be about 180,000, but I, I don't know where they will be after the election. So I, I, you know, cut back on those projections a little bit. So consequently, at, at year-end, one thing that I wanted to touch on also is on the, the detention center, the jail. We had anticipated that we would, we had budgeted 300 US Marshals inmates beginning January. That did not come to fruition. We had, the last time we had inmates housed out of county were in December. And in March of this year, the sheriff's office notified the US Marshals that we would be able to accommodate more federal inmates. So up to 250 is what the sheriff felt that they would be able to accommodate. For this month, we have been anywhere from 240 to 233 inmates. I know it took a while for the US, for the feds to come back in with their, with their inmates. So the impact there to, to general fund on, as far as US Marshals revenue will probably be about a million dollar decrease on what we had, as opposed to what we had projected. However, some of those decreases in some of the departments are, that particular variance is being picked up by other departments that are, that we project based on what, how they're operating now, that they will exceed. So we anticipate, we had budgeted 72.8 million in revenues for general fund and the projection right now is that we will be at 72.4, which is very, very close if everything holds true. And so I also wanted to point out on the, back on the first page, the district clerk's office, they were budgeted at 1.1 million and they are already through March at 719,000. So I anticipate that they will exceed their budget by about 14%. So there are, you know, some, some departments that have been able to, to generate more. We have other departments that, you know, have issues that they, that they cannot control at this point, so they, I don't think that they would be able to meet budget. But overall, I anticipate that our revenues will be operational, will be operating fairly, fairly well and that we will meet our, our revenue budget or come pretty close to. On Roden Bridge, they are doing, the projection is that they will be able to meet their budget. They are using a number, they're still working on the disaster recovery funds, on the repairs that they are doing. So we anticipate Roden Bridge will not have a, will not have a problem and will, will be able to meet their budget.
Martha, just real quick on the, go back real quick on the general fund. You've highlighted the, on the expenditure side, a few of the accounts. Is there any reason that some of these accounts that you highlighted only have less than a third of the monies available?
Yes, they actually have some of the, because your encumbrances for the, that will carry them through September 30th are already factored in there.
From prior year?
No, for this current year.
From this year?
Yes, for contracts and things of that sort.
Okay.
That's, that's why some of those are at that low rate. And Javier will go over the, the expenditure.
Just real quick on the revenue side, though, you said that we were along the bud, in line with what we adopted as a budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
But did you go back or maybe go back and, and, not, not at this meeting, but maybe send the commissioners, actual, what we were, what were actual as of March compared to the actual of the prior year? Or even the last year's final audited numbers versus this year's actual numbers through March? And come up with some kind of, if you can, some kind of a projection? Because I know that we adopted a very lean budget and so it, it's coming in about where we expected with the exception of the, of the bridge crossings. But if you could give that to us, because that'll enable us to compare real numbers versus the, you know, to the budget numbers, if you can do that.
Okay, will do.
Thanks.
And on the, on the JP, it's, I, I expect that a good number of that increase is probably due to the SCAF law implementation. So I commend the court for moving forward with that.
I have a question on that, too. On the SCAF law issue, it is my understanding that when the order is issued from the tax office to go back to the JPs to clear whatever outstanding fines they have, it has to be stamped and signed off and paid to renew your plates, correct? That's the procedure?
Correct.
I'm concerned about how many cases that the JPs are, you know, in older cases, are just being dismissed, 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 with zero fines being collected. Do you have record of that, of how many cases are actually dismissed through SCAF, through the SCAF law procedure?
That will be available on the Office of Court Administration website because when the case disposition and case filings are reported, then those cases will show up as dismissals and as dismissed cases. And we should be able, we should also be able to access that on the, on the software program because it, I believe it will show cases that are just dismissed. Is that correct?
You can see the cases that are dismissed from the law program?
I, I can't, I can't hear much.
Yeah, you may want to come up here so the world can hear you.
The JP software, I won't tell you which cases are dismissed tied to SCAF law. The SCAF law, I believe, software, if any, is separate from the JP software.
Well, can we get a list of actual cases?
We can give you a list of cases dismissed.
On a monthly basis by each JP?
I'm sorry?
By JP, how many cases are actually dismissed?
Yes.
Okay, you can do that?
Yeah.
I'd appreciate a report like that.
Sure.
Thank you.
And the, the tax office advises that they do have that information as well because the, I guess they report it when the case actually gets dismissed as opposed to an actual collection.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Judge and Commissioners, on page three, starting with the general fund expenditures, yes, there are a few that are, that are highlighted. And these expenditures are reported through the end of April and the reason for that is because to pick up the six months' worth of utilities and fuels because they're actually paid in the month. Of course, you also have the salaries that are for the month of April. So anything above, you know, 42% is, is normal. There are a few that are lower than that. As Mrs. Lardisaw mentioned, some of those, say with the county clerks, it's because of the encumbrances, their contracts, you know, for the year, so it kind of skews that a little bit. On the human resources, the, the reason it's below that is because of contractual payments. Data processing is because of maintenance agreements. MNO Port Isabel towards the bottom. That one is utilities, they are running a little high in that particular facility. On page four, the mental health transports at 33%. The thing with that one, though, everything that, all the expenses in that particular department are reimbursed by the hospital. So if we go over, we, we bill for what's spent and so we'll get reimbursed for that. MNO Sheriff's Office, that's the large encumbrance that's there that's, that's throwing that. Inaugural services and autopsies there, there is an issue just with the amount that was budgeted. The expenditures are running high. I know there's been discussions as far as contracting with a pathologist to perform those. Currently, we're paying with a, a particular company that's providing those services, that those expenditures are running high. If we continue with that, we will run out of money within that particular budget. Overall, most of the departments are, you know, are where they should be. There are a couple of areas of concern where we are running kind of high fuel, of course, being one of them. As you all know, you know, the cost of gasoline has, has, well, it's kind of fluctuated. It's, it shot up and then now it's coming back down again. So to get, you know, an accurate number as to what we project, where we're going to be at, at the end of the fiscal year, is, is a little difficult. There's, it's, it's a wide gap, but you know, just, just averaging out what we've spent for the first six months in fuel, if, if that continues through the end of the fiscal year, we're looking at running short by about $170,000. If the gas prices start trending back up again, we could go as high as $250,000 shortfall within the fuel budget, within all the departments, within the general fund only. The highest, of course, being due to, within the law enforcement departments. The other couple of issues is overtime within the jail. The other couple of issues is overtime within the jail. This past fiscal year, when we adopted the budget, the overtime budget was, was cut by $150,000. Where they're at right now, they're, at the beginning of the fiscal year, their overtime was actually rather high. Since then, it's kind of dropped off. But if you take the average of the past three months, just for the overtime costs, and kind of project out for the remainder of the fiscal year, they will approximately be about $65,000 over budget in overtime. That's if it remains at that level. If it, if it goes up higher, you know, it'll be more than that. Another one is there's a few departments that are...
Javier, just real quick, go back on the overtime. Didn't we, didn't we do something during the year?
We added, yes, additional jail staff.
Yeah, and because weren't we told that if we added more jail staff, it would reduce the overtime significantly? So I'm not hearing that.
Well, it'll be less than, the overage will be less, let me put it that way.
No, the overbudgeted expenditure will be less, but nonetheless, it'll be over.
And it's still going to be over budget.
Even adding the Sheriff additional staff.
Right now, yeah, right now, they have $41,000 left in the overtime budget. They're, for the past three months, they've been averaging about $27,000.
And that overtime comes from where principally? The jail? The jailers?
Yes, that's strictly jailers.
Okay, but I thought that we had added enough to comply with what they needed, and I think, I mean, am I not right?
Yes, that was...
Yes, I'm not right, or yes, we did?
No, yes, you are right. You're correct. When we added the additional staff, it was...
But weren't we told that if we added the additional staff, that that's what they needed, and we gave them everything they needed in terms of what they asked for of personnel, or did we short them by some people?
The Court approved what was requested.
Okay, so the Court approved what was requested. The overtime was supposed to go down, and now you're, we've got seven, six, seven months, five months left into the fiscal year. We've got $41,000 left. How much are we averaging per month at overtime?
About $27,000.
So then where's that money going to come from to do that? I mean, how are we going to do that?
General Fund.
I mean, that's a rhetorical question. I didn't mean for you to answer, because I know you don't, you know, really, well, I think you know where it's going to come from, but, I mean, but, you know, we're told one thing, this is going to cure it. It's not cured, and so now the silver lining is, well, we're not going to be over as much. But nonetheless, we're still going to be over.
Correct.
Significantly over. Okay.
Okay.
The only, the only other possibility, Judge, have all these positions been filled?
At one point or another, yes. I mean, the jail has a lot of turnover, so, you know, they may fill those, but say another slot is empty, and so it, you know, it goes back and forth.
So how many, how many slots are empty at this particular point in time, do you know?
No, I don't.
Well, you know, and that's a good point, but if that's the case, then you should be able to shift money from those unoccupied slots to cover part of the overtime.
Right.
Like laps and just sweep it over there.
Correct.
There's not even $65,000.
Well, what we, what the Court had directed is that as, you know, the lab salaries were incurred, that they were being swept over, and right now, you know, they get swept over to general administration under contingencies. The last, through the last time we did it, which was, I believe, a month ago, there was $275,000 that had been swept within the whole General Fund, from all the departments. I don't remember specifically how much of it came from the jail at this point. I'm sure they have some right now, but it's, it's not going to be, you know, to the tune of that. And that's why it's real important when there are these lab salaries or lab fringe benefits or what have you, that they don't get reallocated, because that's, that's kind of the cushion or the buffer that we have for some of these other things that may go over by the end of the year. So at the end of the fiscal year, we have budgeted amounts that are going to cover these, these overages. But of course, the Court will have to, need to be aware of that, and, which kind of leads into, some of the departments are already out of funds for office supplies, and so they're asking me, okay, where can I get money from? Within their budget, there's nowhere else there is to move funds to allocate to office supplies, so I don't have an answer for them. I told them, I don't know. I mean, it'll have to be addressed to the Commissioners' Court. And my other question to that is, you know, why are you out of office supply money within six months, seven months, when that same amount of funds lasted all last fiscal year? I'm not aware of that, any particular item, that the price has gone up, you know, significantly enough to account for that, so...
Well, has, look, they haven't doubled in price, come on.
Yeah, so, I mean, that will be coming, you know, probably by the, for the next meeting or so, because there are some departments that already don't have any money for office supplies, so...
And this may be a question, once the monies are alloc, and, you know, we know this, but once the monies are allocated to each department, y'all do not scrutinize what they're buying and how much of it they're buying, et cetera, right?
No.
That's just their, okay. Maybe we should.
Well, then it becomes, there's, there's the issue of, if, when the budget is allocated to the, to an elected official, and they feel that they need 20 cases of paper, we can't tell them no.
No, I know, understand.
It's not like...
Let me go, just real quick. When you asked them how come, or you haven't asked that question? You just thought about it on your own?
I did ask, no. I did ask the question, I haven't received an answer yet.
And how long ago did you ask the question?
This happened this week.
Okay.
With one, with one particular department.
You're going to give them a week or so to answer?
Well, if they're going to need, without the answer, you know, we can't proceed, and so they're, don't have money in their office supply line item, and so it's kind of on their shoulders in order to move forward.
Well, just let me suggest this, and I'll move on, but when they come to this, I think they need to come to the Commissioners' Court and explain to the Court why they're out of supplies, what happened out of the ordinary. They don't, they shouldn't tell you, and you be running interference and be their blocker to explain. That should be their responsibility to come to us and tell you, because you don't know why they did that.
No.
So I think it'd be important for them to come and explain it. It could be a reasonable explanation, but they need to be the ones to come and explain to the Court why they're out of office supply money or any other, any other line item, you know, six months into the year when they gave them the same amount of money last year. And it's not going to be because prices doubled and, you know, went up twice as much. I don't think that's right. Thanks.
Correct. So with the General Fund, you know, that's pretty much it. Other than that, like, as I mentioned, the departments just seem to be on track. If you move to Page 6, that's the Roden Bridge Fund. All the departments, you know, they're where there should be, other than the Colonia paving project, but that, you know, moves along as, as they proceed, and when they're out of funds, that those projects cease. As y'all are aware, within the consolidated precincts, I'm sure the Commissioners, you know, the only item in there that, where they're running short, of course, is road materials, but I'm sure y'all are aware of that. So other than that, you know, we seem to be on track.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think, going along with the Judge said, there is a, let's say, a partial exemption because they are elected as to how they spend their budget, but they're still accountable to the people who elected them and this Commissioners' Court to not put the other, the entire budget in jeopardy because of their lack of, or not wanting to come before the Commissioners saying, why are we using the money? So they, it should almost be mandatory, kind of like the travel issue. If they don't send somebody to explain why they're traveling or why they need it, or they need the hours, they don't go. Well, this kind of should be one of those mandatory issues. Otherwise, this is going to continue to happen in every department every year, and if one gets away with it, then it'll be, it can become rampant. And I know it may be small money, but in the overall scheme of things, we don't have a huge fund balance. So we have to hold people's feet to the fire to make them account for the money they spent, especially at the six-month mark, because this is kind of, there's no turning back now. I mean, it's almost too late to correct the issue at the six-month mark. Thank you.
Thanks, Javier.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
Second.
My Commissioner Benavides, second. My Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor. Secretary of Defense saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Now for the highlight of the program. Presentation by the Rio Grande Valley Inigent Healthcare Corp. on the Inigent Healthcare Program.
We hope to make it entertaining for the Court.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
We went through the boring stuff first, now we get to you.
But you know, it was good for us, I think, to be here and maintain perspective of how hard it is to make the county run, and when you come to these meetings, it gives us perspective in that regard, so I think it was educational for us.
Thank you, sir.
But as I mentioned, it's good to see you guys. It's always good to be here in front of the Court. I'd like to start out by acknowledging some of our board members that are present this morning. We have Dr. Maria Dill right over here. Becky Ballinger's here with us as well. There are two committee representatives on our board, and of course, Yvette Salinas is our advisory board that has, that participates with us very consistently. In addition, we have Sherri Griffin, who adminis, is the administrator of this particular program, and our great director, Pam McGorke, who will be reporting out to you guys here very shortly. I'd like to basically start out by just telling you guys, I said Becky Ballinger, I think I introduced Becky, did I?
Introduce her again.
Becky Ballinger, one more time.
She deserves dual recognition.
Dr. Maria, Maria Dill, one more time? Yeah, go ahead. All right. I'd like to start out by telling you that Valley Baptist continues to be incredibly proud of the public-private partnership that we've established since September of 2007, and it's hard to believe that five years have gone by since this issue was first raised with the Court. But I think if you look at every single agreement that we currently have in place with, with the county, it's been that proverbial win-win. Certainly a win for our institution, but just as importantly, a win for the county and the communities here within Cameron County. So from that perspective, please always note and understand how very proud we are of the relationship and the partnership that we've established. I think you're also going to see in this report, I think you're going to be very happy and very proud, that this particular program has not only just continued to survive, but rather has thrived under some, some very significant leadership of Pam and her team. You're going to see numbers that are going to reflect that, in fact, we're helping more people in the county that otherwise might not be helped, which means healthier residents in this community, which ultimately, ultimately leads to lower healthcare costs. And obviously, that's our goal, that's our responsibility. Thanks to y'all giving us that opportunity, I think we're making some headway. So unless y'all have any comments or questions of me, I'd like to ask Pam to report out.
Let's go.
Thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be here again. We have been working really hard. I know it's been a while since we've been here, but we've been working really hard, and we continue to really work for this community and make sure that as many people as possible can access these services that are provided by many of the physicians in our area. You all have a packet that I put in a green folder on your desk, and it has our network and all the physicians that help us in what we do. So as you look at that, and if you see them, you know, feel free to thank them for what they do, because they do a tremendous job, and, and we're constantly working with them and advising them and, and asking for their help and making sure that we can be as efficient as possible and affect as many people's lives as possible, so that's really important to us. So basically, to start out, we'll start with, you know, I've given you FY 10, 11, and so far through April, 12 numbers, so that you can see what we've done. But if you look at the graph, the graph just really shows what has happened. The red bar is where we ended FY 11, and we ended FY 11 with 1,732 members and have served a total of 2,443 individuals by that time within that year. And then we started FY 12 with those 1,700, actually a little bit more that came in, and we continued to grow. That blue line kind of stayed up a little bit, now it's starting to come down. Part of the reason for that coming down, as you're going to see in a couple of slides later, is that we've had people on service with us that have been trying to qualify for disability, they're trying to qualify for other programs, so we've carried them through that process until they actually have been accepted on those programs. So a lot of people in this last year, in this last six months, actually have come to us and said, I've qualified for disability, they come to us and tell us that, so we take them off service and they go on other covered service. So we fulfilled a gap for them, which is very good, because a lot of them really need healthcare, and they can't get that without our help, so we're glad to do that. And you'll see our numbers are just going up. We are a little flatlined right now, but May numbers are already starting to shoot back up. So I feel like by the time we get to August 31 of this year, we'll be back up and have approximately 1,700 to 1,800 people on service. And if you look there at the line within the graph, it shows what we're carrying per month, and you'll see that there's a 23 percent increase over FY 11. We're carrying about 1,600 members per month on average on service versus 1,700 last year, which is a huge number of people with no increase in budgeting at this point, because we really haven't needed it, which we're going to show you over on the next, well, I'll show you a couple of slides from now. But this gives you, since you are Commissioners, I wanted to give you a breakdown of what kind of people in our community we're serving, where they're from, so that you can see how many people in your communities that you serve are getting care from us. Again, they, we've looked at this purple box a couple of times where it says 41 percent in program, two-plus years. That means that we're carrying people who are maintaining in our program, which means they've started on service, they haven't just come in to have some catastrophic event covered by the program, they're actually staying in the program. So they're, as you well know, they're all assigned to PCP, so they have a medical home. Well, 41 percent of the people that we've been serving have been continually seeing their physicians and getting the healthcare that they need, which only improves their quality of life and their healthcare status. We don't have to wait until they show up at the ER in order to be served. We can help them, make sure that they maintain, make sure they get their medications, take their, get their A1C testing if they're diabetic, you know, get the things that they need to have a quality of life, and that's what this is all about. In the age group, I want to bring up, you see we have 32 people who are 80-plus years old. We also have a lot of young people, but our oldest gentleman that's with us is 105 years old, and he's in fairly good health, and he hasn't, he doesn't spend a lot of money, but we're very happy that we can help people like that, that as they age, they need to be in a program where they can go see a doctor and keep up with their health. And it's good that he wants to at his age. Here's a look at our financial information. Again, I'm showing you where we, where we ended in FY 11, since we haven't been here and showed you that, and how it compared to FY 10. The numbers on the right-hand side, the variance column, shows you what FY 11 showed to be against FY 10, and you can see that we processed 20 percent more claims. I also want to bring up that those 44,000 claims and the claims of 35,000 this year, they're being processed manually. There's no electronic process for that, and we are still doing that with two claims adjusters that actually have been with us from the beginning, and you can be very proud. They used to be county employees, and they came to us, and they do a tremendous job, and they have a very, very low error rate. They're a really great, great staff, and they continue to be engaged with us. But if you look at the claims total, even though we processed 20 percent more claims, we were able to bring our costs down from the prior year by about 5 percent. What that means is that we were giving more efficient care. It basically means, again, people are going to the doctor, they're getting healthier, they're on their medications, they're maintaining, and they're not ending up in the hospital, which is a higher level of care. And that's evidenced there in that average per claim in the PMPM, which is per member per month, what we're spending. We were able to bring that down. So again, that shows a management, the PCP model, the medical home, I believe, is really working. We have great PCPs, just like Dr. Dill's practice, Rio Grande State Center, that actually help us a lot, Brownsville Community Health, and many others in, in our community in Cameron County. So we're very pleased with that. And then if we go over to the FY 12 numbers, you'll see that we're, we're running a little high this year, that $4 million that we have expended on medical claims since September through the end of April. We're trending towards about $6 million. It could be a little bit more than that, according to what kind of people we get coming in the door, because we're still bringing in new people every day, and a lot of them are in severe need of healthcare. So we very well could spend a little bit more, but we work to maintain that and try to be as efficient as possible. Our prescription medications have gone up just a little bit, but we're still, that's our monthly cost per member, $17 per member. Remember, we went back to a generic-only formula, formulary, and did away with brand-name medications, and if there are brand-name medications, we encourage them to use an assistance program to get them for free, and that continues to work for us these days. And pharmacists like Commissioner Garza, we appreciate your help and assistance in this program, too, because the pharmacies have really stepped up, because it's about a 60 percent discount off of their retail price than what they would be paid by Medicaid. So it's, it's a huge undertaking that everybody in our community has made. And you'll see that we've been able to get back some money that we've paid out to hospitals, especially, because a lot of people will qualify for emergency Medicaid. So our hospitals are stepping up and making sure that we get that money back and put back in our bank, put back in the Members Benefit Bank, and can be used for additional care. And then we're showing you our administrative costs, which continues to be very low as a total expenditure of our expenditures. This is a graphic look of what we've spent and how we've spent it. That red bar is this year so far. In some cases, it's very high, in some cases, it's about even and has come down. But again, remember that we're, we're serving more people, so the volume is going to drive up our expenditures, but if you go, remember... But if you go, remember back to that other slide where I showed you the PMPM, we're continuing to bring that down. So we're trying to be more efficient, more effective. And so if you look at this, our physician services are up. That's office visits, and I think that's very important. Again, once I said a while ago that, you know, people are going to their doctors and they're actually seeing physicians and getting more care, and what's happening, you see that hospital inpatient bar is coming down. Even though it's just about even, it's starting to come down, which means that we're affecting more people up front. We're not waiting until they show up in the ER. Now, that hospital outpatient bar's probably got some people worried, it had me worried there at the beginning. But if you look at it from the perspective of people are going to the doctor, the doctor is sending them to get their procedures done on an outpatient basis, whether that be a screening colonoscopy, whether it be a mammogram, whether it be any kind of a service that they need, a CAT scan, an MRI, they're sending them to the hospital, getting that done, addressing what's going on, again, before they end up in the ER with a catastrophic event. So I think it's, even though we've got, you know, we've basically doubled our expenditures in that area, it's a good sign. And that's evidenced by this screenshot that, where I compared FY '11 to FY so far this year, 212. The arrows indicate where we were in '11 and how things have grown. If you look at that physical therapy, we made a change in the covered benefit policy to where we were only providing up to three visits of physical therapy. Our doctors came to us and some of our members came to us and said, "This is not working. I've got patients who are getting their hips replaced, knees replaced, and in three visits, they cannot get the rehab that they need." So we listened to them, we worked with them, and we expanded that benefit up to 12 visits. Well, that's cost us money, but we're still doing it efficiently. But we have to look at those kind of things to make sure that we don't let things get out of hand. So we're going to continue to review all of our coverage policies and make sure that they're efficient and effective for the patient, number one, and then that they help maintain the Members Benefit Bank, because it's very limited at the 30,000 max per year. Another thing you're going to see on here that has really moved up the ladder are those injections, number two, that number-two item, that's cancer treatment. We've got a lot more people that are coming to us with cancer. But the good thing is, is that we're catching it early, because the doctors are sending them to us. So we can catch them early, and we can get them on service so that they can get their treatment and hopefully be a survivor. We can't help everybody survive, but we're trying our best on that. And then another thing that has really popped up, and it's in that red circle, is the heart cases. We've had a little bit of jump in cardiovascular cases. Why, I really can't explain that. You know, it could be a myriad of reasons as to why that's happening, but you can see that's very expensive. That AICD implant, that is one patient. So one patient that cost to us was $17,000, and that was done on an outpatient basis. That is an outpatient procedure, no matter who the payer is. And then those left heart casts, we've actually had 14 of those, and that heart cast did not appear on the FY '11 list at all. So we're going to start having to look at those patients. You know, we've already addressed our diabetics, we're addressing the cancer patients and case management, and now we're going to have to start looking at our hearts. So our need for intervention is growing as we move through daily. And then at the bottom, you can just see the numbers. The numbers just really show what we're having to spend in an outpatient arena, but I'd rather spend it on the outpatient side than the inpatient side any day. And so this is what we've done. Some of this you've seen before, some of Commissioner Hernandez and Sanchez, you haven't seen this before, but we try to keep you up to date as to what we've done since the very beginning and what we continue to do. We've served almost 6,400 individuals in Cameron County since September 2007 and spent over $23 million. That's expenditures that probably wouldn't have happened, and that many people maybe couldn't have been on service without the program. And we appreciate your work with us on that. We continue to carry our network of providers, which is over 250. I'm addressing the things that are in yellow. That express renewal process has really worked. We've had people who've been on continuous care now for a year. They haven't had to come back to our office, which opened up a slot for us to bring a new person in. So that really worked very well with our appointments, even though the people are just coming in the door and wanting to get on service. We actually are out in June for appointments. I hate to say that, but that's where we are, and that's how many people need help. So we're doing everything we can to address that and be creative and look for other ways to help get them on service faster. We're providing them diabetic testing supplies that are obtained through the pharmacies, that's free for them. That PCP model, again, that is just working wonders. Our PCPs and our specialists have been very good to us, and they work very well with this program. The case management program is very important, because that allows us to intervene with our members and make sure that they're testing if they're diabetics and doing the things that their doctors want them to do. That is one area that, you know, I would really like to expand, and I've chatted with Sherri and Manny about that, because I think intervention is really a key to continuing on this road of success. So it's very important. And that $2,500 grant that Wells Fargo Bank gave us last year, that has worked wonders. We've gotten hospital beds, walkers, canes. We've done a lot of work for people who've really needed it. And this, I think, is interesting. I actually got curious, and I started running reports, and this just kind of shows what we provided. Some of these numbers are staggering. There's over 40, almost 45,000 physician office visits that have been provided. That's really a good thing. People, we want people to go to the doctor, that was part of our mission. 1,100 screening mammograms, 775 colonoscopies, 1,022 flu vaccines. You know, and there's some other things there. We've checked cholesterol on 5,000 people, and the 79 PET scans, that doesn't seem like a big number, but when you consider that a PET scan on a retail basis costs $10,000 to $12,000, and of course, we only pay the Medicaid rate, which is about $1,800, but we've given 79 of those. So that is something that definitely an indigent consumer would not get on their own. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning, Manny, how this started back in '07, and almost didn't happen, but glad it did. And it's important to note that you've really taken a program that was somewhat unsustainable year-round, and not only were able to service better, bill better, but it became a year-round program, which is something that we had not seen since I've been on the court and all this time. So I want to thank you for doing that. Just a real quick question, how do you see the future of healthcare with what's occurring today and what we're planning on doing today?
I think it's in flux right now. We, I think y'all are familiar with the 1115 Medicaid waiver program that the state's trying to roll out. We've been working very closely with Yvette and Pedro and Dubya in regards to the changes that will occur with implementation of the 1115 waiver. Our problem right now, Judge, is that in fact, I don't think the state knows how it's going to roll it out just yet. There's almost a day-by-day discussion and change in potential implementation and process that's going to impact us, I believe, down here. I think ultimately, our challenge in Cameron County is that we're very limited in regards to what tax funds are available for purposes of the IGT funding. And if you consider that the old UPL program, which we're all familiar with, is now going to become the waiver program, it's really finding different ways to access the funds that are available. The whole concept of the 1115 waiver program is that there's going to be $29 billion available to Texas over the next five years. That's great. The problem is, unless you have the funds available to generate IGT transfers, you're not going to have access to any more additional funds than we're currently receiving through the program that currently exists in Cameron County. So our challenge, and this is what we've been working with Yvette on, is trying to figure out different ways to be able to access those funds, different ways to, so that tax dollars meet the criteria, which then in turn will allow those tax dollars to be transferred through the IGT process. And that's what's not set by the state just yet. The state is sort of duking it out with CMS and Washington. We're being told from our folks in Austin that in fact, CMS is going to be very conservative, and that the definitions of the allowable tax dollars that currently exist are not going to change. And the bottom line with that is simply that we're going to be stymied in regards to being able to attach additional waiver dollars, because we're capped at what's available through the county right now. So short answer is, it's still in flux. We certainly hope within the next 30 days to have a better idea as to what all those definitions are going to look like, with the hope of ultimately coming back through Yvette and Dubya and working with the court to figure out if there are some additional ways that we can continue increasing those IGT funds.
Commissioner?
Just one note on the side, you know, I see the cost, you know, the prescription cost, but I think that one thing that is not mentioned in the report that you probably should consider trying to include in the future is what your folks do for the people that are on the needy meds program, where they access their medication through the drug companies, and they get them mailed to them or sent to them through a pharmacy or whatever. But the needy med program, what that allows is for her staff to access medicines free of charge that are not paid for by either them or us, and the people have them. And usually, as we well know, it's the expensive ones. So I would venture to say, you know, from my perspective, that what you do with that particular program for these folks probably is well over another million dollars.
I would say so. One of the things, Commissioner, that we do is, we actually don't do that in our office. That is pushed back to the doctor.
Right.
So we'd have to get a reporting process put in place for them to report that. But I agree with you, it's over a million, because if you look, I look at a lot of patient records when they send in requests for prior authorizations and through case management. And the list sometimes has 10, 11, 12 medications on it. And they're the brand-name medications.
Yeah.
And so I'm sure that a lot of those are being received free.
Yeah.
And so those are very expensive.
Because I know when they come to us, that's what the first thing we do for the patient when we know they're in the program, is we try to hook them up to that program, and it's a real simple process. But instead of having to spend $600 to $800 with me, they just get it shipped directly to their home, and they can afford that versus having to not be on the medication, which is usually the case.
Exactly right.
Which leads to another visit to you guys, it gets expensive.
It is.
So I don't know if there's any way to tie that.
I'd actually like to bring that into our office and be able to do that. Labor resources is obviously an issue with that, and there's so many people, we have them lined up at the door.
It's becoming, it's becoming quite easily manageable nowadays with the internet process that is used, because, I mean, for us to be in business, to do that for the patients, it's becoming more important just to keep the patient healthier and compliant.
Absolutely.
You know, so.
Anything else?
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Vella for being named CEO for Valley Baptist. I know it happened several months ago, but congratulations again, and thank you for the good, good job that you all have been doing over, well, since you all started.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge? By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. That's M.D., presentation of the, thank you, guys. Board members, thank you. Presentation of the second quarter revenue report for the Parks and Rec Department.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. I handed out a little binder, a little book with some changes, and there was just some typos. For example, the, on the wording, we had first quarter still, and it's actually the second quarter. The other thing I changed was, I believe it was on our community parks, instead of 228%, it was 128, I believe. So, but overall, the park system has an increase of 19.5% in the second quarter in revenues, which was 271,695. And the increases are attributed to the RV rentals, our concession percentage, our daily entrance fees, and in our trash bag program, since we started it earlier this year, we started in February, that's attributed to the increase. If you go to the next page, the Isabella, we had a $221,319,000 increase, which was 19.4% over last quarter. Andy Bowie had 1.13% increase, which was $1,041. Daftamay was $986.29 over, which was 1.3% over last quarter. Our Public Beaches was $47,574.77, which is 53.9% increase over last quarter. And our community parks was $773 more than the last quarter last year, 128%. Is there any questions on the revenue part? If you go into the second part of the report, which shows our revenues and our expense comparison, on our expenses for Isabella, we're doing okay. When you get to Andy Bowie, we were up or short in the month of February, and we're trying to figure what that was, and Sedhi was helping me out, and we attribute that to, we got three, payroll hit February three times in February, so that's where we're short. The same thing for Daftamay. February hit the, the payroll hit February three times, so we're short there. And there's other costs that we exceeded, which was office supplies and building maintenance. And then you go to Public Beaches, again, the payroll issue is there, and then also, since we started the trash bag program earlier, that was also something that attributed to the overage on the expenses. Other than that, the Greens Division was another one that we went over, again, because of payroll, and then Park Administration. So the only two that we show that we're short overall for this first two quarters, this is Greens Division and Park Administration. So we're going to keep an eye on those and make sure that we keep those under control.
Any questions? Thank you. Have you had anything else?
No.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
Same.
By Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Last item under presentations, that's M.D., 2012 department audits performed by the county auditor's office.
Judge, Commissioners, we prepared a summary that Sedhi was passing out right now. And what it is going to show you is audits, departmental audits, that have been conducted on the county departments for fiscal year '10 and '11, and what our goal is this year. You have, it's a lot of documents in there. We've attached the audit reports, the findings that have been issued to all of the departments. Any, actually, it's the report that was given to the department with any responses that they may have provided, and any pending issues that we have. And just to bring the court up to speed as to where we are and what we, some of the functions that we perform in reviewing the various county offices that collect, that are in charge of collecting any revenues for Cameron County. So with that having been said, I'll let Sedhi go ahead and start doing the presentation on the actual field audits. He is our lead person that coordinates and selects the staff and pools departmental employees as he is conducting these audits.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners, Court, and County Judge. Basically, what I provided is a summary of our history, and just kind of give you an overview of what we've been doing. In 2010... In 2010, we started doing, is when I started doing, when I came on board, we started doing audits. And we started off with about 22 audits, which was an accumulation of different types of audits, which consists of unannounced cash counts, cash receipts, dispersments, non-cash transactions, and so on. In 2011, we added additional audits, doing a total of 83 audits. And there we expanded a little bit and continued doing unannounced cash counts, compliance reporting. We did an audit on refund procedures at the parks. We did financial report review at the parks, some internal control audits and cash receipts audits. What we have planned for in 2012, we're looking at about 97 different audits. We're going to continue with unannounced cash counts, compliance reporting with Local Government Code 114, financial reports review, contract compliance, fee compliance, cash receipts, internal controls, and non-cash transactions. Those are just a variety of audits that, that our office is doing. Just to give you a, I guess, highlight some of the findings we did find. In 2010, this was before the new software the parks is using, what we discovered out there, just some, some, some highlights is basically, we found a clerk who had cashed a personal check, basically used their own till. And so that was a finding we gave to the parks, which has been addressed.
But let me ask a question on that personal check that was, when you went to go, how old was the check that was sitting there?
I don't recall the date of the check. I'm not sure how long it had been sitting in the till, but we did find that.
Hey, but if it was, I mean, either way, it's not acceptable, but.
Right.
Was there a month, two months, three months, or a day?
Not too sure if I noted that. I was just more noting that there was a check in there that needed to be deposited. At that time, in 2010, there's loose controls on daily entrances, cash receipts, and deposits. Other findings we had that year, we did an audit on Precinct 2-2 JP on their non-cash transactions and we found that, you know, there's missing case files, missing supporting documents. And the points on those non-cash transactions are basically cases that are paid for via community service. And so we're looking for support documents to, to support that versus that, the cases being, versus not being able to find the supporting documents. Other findings we had was we didn't receive any responses to one of our audit reports to the district, from the district attorney's office. In 2011, we continued to do unannounced cash counts. And while doing these cash counts, we discovered more offices with internal control issues. We weren't allowed access to the district attorney's office to do petty cash counts. One of the constables didn't have their manual seats available for us to review. We also discovered not very much compliance with reporting to the Commissioners' Court by the constables and Justice of the Peace. We had one JP not doing timely deposits. And we discovered that the financial module, the new software at the parks wasn't being utilized correctly. And so we addressed many of these findings and we have a lot of departments that responded well. You know, we have park improvements, improved their internal controls. We had building permits improve their internal controls, pre-trial services. Justice of the Peace, Precinct 1 has improved their timely deposits. We have certain offices now reporting in compliance with Local Government Code 114. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
I have a question. On the, you talk a lot about these internal controls and the segregation of duties. When you get to that point, did you make a recommendation, I mean, other than, it's easy to, I mean, it's easy to say, you know, duties are not segregated property, but when you go into these offices, do they have the personnel in order to segregate the duties?
Uh, yes.
They do?
Yeah, when we go out and do these audits, we definitely make recommendations. It involves sometimes having the office supervisor or maybe the elected official involved.
But do you make those recommendations speci, I did not see, see them here. I mean, I saw, read, and I just got this right now, but I mean, if, if I read, you know, adequate segregation of duties, not there, whatever. Do you actually say, this is how you can do it? You can have the office clerk, you know, write out the receipt, make the deposit, but you have the elected official go to the bank, make the deposit, as an example. Do you tell them specifically how to do it?
In some cases, yes. And some cases, you have to leave it up to management to decide how to separate their duties. If you get very specific, then when we go out to audit, we'd be auditing our own rules and, that we put in place. So it kind of, we can't give them very specific because then we kind of, that kind of creates a bias to our own audits for future audits.
Well, but I, I mean, how, you know, these offices, some of these folks really are not familiar with internal controls and segregation. I mean, it's all, you know, maybe easy for, for some of us, but they don't know. Sometimes you have to tell them, look, we recommend this person doing this, or, I mean, something because they don't know.
Right.
And it's obvious if they don't know.
Right. And we do work with them as much as we can.
Okay.
It might not necessarily be in writing, but definitely we have these conversations back and forth.
And I didn't see in here, it just says, management responses above. I didn't see any above anywhere.
Like on the. Each, each report is different. It's just accumulation of reports and not all of them are the same format. The management responses are, if any, are attached to the back of the report.
Okay. Did everybody respond to your comments?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Are you going back to ask them? I mean, I think, I mean, look.
Yes.
There's no point in going through all this if they're not going to get, give feedback to you as to how they're going to address these concerns.
Right. We're in the process of working up these audits and follow-up audits and tracking departments that do not respond. And it's just a process we're trying to work on.
Okay. Questions?
Going back to what, what you were saying, I mean, when the judge asks you, do you all work with the different departments? I kind of find it hard to believe that as a county auditor's office doing audits, that it took so long to find out that there was problems internally, whether they'd be in the Parks Department or they'd be in the JP's office or anywhere else. For instance, myself, if I was a JP, okay, or the tax assessor collector, if I was to come in to office, I would think that if I would be handling money in my office, I was going to go to you all and say, okay, what accounting procedures do you want me to follow? How do I do this? How do I implement it? So I know I've asked this question before to Mrs. Galarza, and I know things have been done a certain way for so long, but I think that you, you would think that you all would sit down with each new elected official that handles money to tell them, look, this is the county's accounting practices, you know, and you're accountable to the Commissioners' Court and of course, to the taxpayers. So, and I realize everybody is short of personnel, but I, I really believe that any time a new elected official comes into office, this is something that needs to be done by your office, you know, to prepare them for what we expect here, you know, for our revenues and for our accounting purposes. I don't know.
We did last year, or I'm not sure if it was the year before, when Judge, Justice of the Peace Flores came in, Justice of the Peace Gano, I did meet with them and talk to them about their, their office. And I also met with Justice of the Peace Medosa and Justice of the Peace Hach. So, so we are trying to do as much as we can with what we have to, to talk to these new officials. Of course, we might not catch everyone, but we do try.
And, and I realize that, but when you all say, well, they weren't depositing, you know, daily, why are they not depositing daily? And why do we have to wait for a year or two to go by to find this out? I mean, that should be a red flag immediately. I think we have the armored service that is available to everybody, am I right?
Not too sure if it's available to everyone, but most offices, yes. And the reason you'll see a lag is before we come to Commissioners' Court, we want to work with the office and not just come and present and throw them under, under the table.
No, and I understand that. But I mean, in, in some of these cases, a whole bunch of years went by before it was brought to our attention. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that I would encourage you all to set accounting practices and plays for every office. And, and I realize, like, Mr. Isaguirre, for example, I mean, he's been in office for many, many years. And I don't believe that you'll find that happening in his office or in the clerk's office. So, I mean, if smaller offices are having these problems, we should address them immediately. And at least let one of us know, if not all of us, so that we can step in. Because even though they are elected officials, they're still accountable to this court. So I'd appreciate your following up on that.
Definitely, we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
Follow-up question. Do all the, are there any policies and procedures, manuals within the JP offices as to, you know, somebody new comes in, they can just get that, you know, three-ring binder and read as to what the procedures are? And haven't we suggested that to them, that they develop a standardized procedures and policy manual that addresses things like manual receipts, depositing, you know, segregation of duties, et cetera? I thought we'd suggested that years ago to them. Anybody recall? Sergio, I don't know if you've been long enough to recall.
They, they, that recommendation was made to them and some of the JP offices do have that manual, some do not.
Well, okay.
Is it, I mean, is it within Commissioners' Court authority to, to say our policies and procedures includes when an office is handling money that these procedures be followed?
I, I believe that based on the statute, that, that would be something that the court could, could, could implement. Also, from, from our perspective, as we continue to do these audits and review the offices, that is something that we recommend to them and we ask them to, we issue a finding on that if they do not have one, then if, if they do not comply and implement and draw up a procedures manual, then it would be our responsibility to notify the court that these particular offices are not complying with our recommendations.
Yeah, but assuming you do all that, okay? I mean, it comes to, you know, to us and hey, these, these folks aren't complying and then we sit here, we look at each other and say, okay, well, you know, we're going to talk to them, there's no consequence. There's no consequence for them doing that other than we drastic action and office of, you know, removal of office, and that's not going to happen. I mean, you know, come on, that's not going to happen. So really, there's no, even at the budget, you can threaten to cut their budget, but you, you don't, you end up hurting them because they keep getting their salary. You hurt the people that they represent.
Or serve.
Because they don't, or serve, because they don't have the resources to do their job. So I think if, if we have elected official that's not doing what they're, what they've been asked to do and they're not following the statute, then we as a court every year, you know what? We get grieved every once in a while, we give raises to elected officials when, when the appropriate time comes, maybe the time where you cut their salary and make them comply till the next year. And if they do, then you, you make it up. Just a food for thought. All right, anything else?
There was one, one item that I caught reading a paper, it was one, one JP has 2,100 tickets that weren't put in the system from 11, from 2011. How does that happen? I would ask Commissioner Dan, I mean, is that not normal, that when you were JP, that you would have your people punch those into the computer pretty much on a daily basis as you receive the tickets?
Well, they should all be in the system. I don't know why they're, they're not. I mean, that's the only way to process them, really.
My, my question would be to you, can you not process them? Not put them in the system?
As a judge?
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're supposed, I mean, can you not, yeah, get these tickets and, oh, I'm not going to put them in, I leave them on the desk.
That's what I, that's what I see.
But there's an obligation for you to carry out your duties as a judge, the judicial canons require.
I think it goes back to what the judge said about no consequence, but that's happening. And that's a lot of revenue the county's losing.
Where, where is that happening?
Well, I don't want to bench on which JP it is, but.
Well, I mean, that's the only way we bring accountability forward.
Port Isabel.
Okay. And so we need to look and see, why is that happening? Has anyone talked to the judge? Has anyone brought it up to him?
I don't know. That's, I guess, is there any consequences? Is there any procedure?
Well.
Does the auditor have a procedure for this or just?
How, how did you come to find that out?
It's right here in the report.
And that there's, tickets aren't being put in?
Yeah, that's right. It was one of the letters inside this report that we, I just received, it's in here.
Well, I haven't read all the letters, because I just got this.
Yeah, I just.
Usually I do my homework tonight before, but I just got this right now.
Ernie is a speed reader.
Yeah.
Of the Evelyn Wood Speed Reading Course.
Commissioner, on that topic, when, when we discovered that, we did talk to Justice of the Peace Benny Ochoa. And when we first walked into his office, you could see it was a little disorganized. This past couple of years, since that, since we've had that talk, we don't see tickets laying around. They've vastly improved. They seem to be running the office a little tighter, just from looking.
I guess, well, obviously it worked, but I would ask you procedurally to make sure that all the JP offices, tickets are current. And if they're not, let us know immediately. Now, I want to, I'm reading this, it's dated April 2011.
Right.
This particular letter I have here.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a couple. I actually went to visit the auditors department, was it last week or a week before? And, because an issue came up about, you know, some deposits that hadn't been made timely and my concern was, why hadn't the auditors caught it? And I went and visited with the auditor's office and what I came to realize was that Sergio's kind of the only auditor that goes out there. I mean, they have a few more, but they're very limited in auditors that actually go audit. There's a lot of employees up there, but the ones that go out in the field, because, you know, for instance, this report that you're giving us has 2010, you know, we're 2012 now. And part of it is, you know, from the 2010 issues, what have we gone back and have we followed up? And, and so maybe one of the ways to bring the accountability is when you make these findings and you get a response, maybe at that time, present them to the court so we can call the elected official up and, and ask them what they're doing to implement changes or how they're, you know, how they're responding to the issues. I think it's, it's important. The other thing is, you know, because our county is big and we have a lot of departments, if we don't have a constant auditing system, other than the once a year we, we visit your office to find out what's not being done correctly, we end up with a lot of loss. I mean, we, we've ended up, I think, we did some quick math the other day and it was over half a million, right Sergio? And, and those are losses that could be avoided if we have tighter auditing procedures and more frequent, which also require more auditors. I understand that, but.
But if we lost half a million, we could afford an audit.
We can afford, right. And, and that was the point that we talked about, you know, had we paid an auditor or two to, to be on top of this, we wouldn't have lost that money. I mean, there are situations where, you know, we paid $20,000 in electric bill that we didn't have to pay for a year, where we, you know, a gas card was continually used that shouldn't have been used after a certain day, where the, the Parks Department, you know, were having some losses that are no longer happening. So, you know, I, I think for the next budget year, we need to look at having more auditors that just do audits, specific audit functions, not payroll, not accounts receivable or accounts payable or whatever else they do up there, but just function of an auditor so that we can run a tighter ship. Because I think what happens is, as big as the county gets, and we're a big county, I mean, in the state of Texas, there's 254 and we're number 11, we're one of the big ones. Our departments are vast and wide enough that if we don't have tighter controls and tighter oversight, it lends itself to a lot more loss. So with the idea of bringing on maybe more auditors, we need to have more reporting to this court probably and on a more frequent basis. And, you know, we might not be able to force these elected officials to do things, but the more often we bring them up to this mic in public, the more often they're probably going to want to try to make things better. It's kind of like Commissioner Benavides said, Mr. Isaguirre's been in office for a long time and as a result of that, he knows what he's doing and does a good job at it. He avoids some of these issues. But one of the, you know, questions that Commissioner Agatha asked me right now was, when you become a new JP, do you train on how to do a lot of this stuff? And, and the reality of it is, we don't. And I think we probably need to set up some training for any new elected official. There's a lot of HR things that need to be done and taught about. There's a lot of HR things that need to be done and taught about, you know, do you do reviews of your employees? Do you give them mid-year? Do you give them end-of-year? Do you do a lot of things that we don't implement? And so for an elected official to come into office not knowing that and not being told or, or asked, hey, can you participate or do part of this? Because, you know, as a function, even though you're an elected official and we can't tell you how to run your office, we need you, because you're running a county department, to make sure that your department's running like the rest of the county. And so, I mean, these are things that we, we should probably put into place and have these reports, I guess, a little more frequent and maybe give, get, figure out how to get more people to conduct these audits to stop the losses.
And on that same tone, I wanted to add at the, behind the PowerPoint presentation in your backup, you'll see a sheet that looks like this, that doesn't have this in red, it looks like this. And if you allow me, I'd like to go over that right now and just to go give you a real brief update. And I'm going to go from the beginning year to where we are right now, okay? In 2001, in the state grants, Cameron County received and administered 2,333,000. Fiscal year 11, we administered 7,782,000. So that, you know, easily tripled. In federal grants, in 2001, the county received $9 million worth of grants. In 2011, we administered $23 million worth of federal grants. Our trust and agency funds have remained.
How can we spend more than we receive?
I'm not showing you there, well, because you also have grantee contributions that come in.
Okay.
Okay. So in the government-wide revenues, in 2001, government-wide were $59 million. In 2011, they were $120 million. Proprietary revenues, which are your, your bridge funds and your parks and the fiduciary funds, in 2001, the revenues were $21 million. And in 2011, our year-ending revenues were $29 million. In 2001, our staff ratio in the auditor's office was 23 staff members. Four of those were in purchasing. In 2011, our staff members are 11, purchasing has seven. So there has been a, a, a big shift. Staff-wise, our office has not kept up with the increased demands to perform more audits. And we continuously have to have more offices to audit and to review. And at the rate we are now, based on the growth that you can see with the staff members that we have, we are not able to, to perform our, our function. So I reach out to the court. I know that Commissioner Sanchez and I visited last month, I mean, last week, I'm sorry. And so I will come back to you at budget year to let you know that we are unable to function the way we are right now. With the staff members that we have right now, we find ourselves in a situation to where we are not able to be proactive the way we need to be. And we are forced to react to particular situations as they arise. We don't have the staff to sit down and say, these are, what we do right now is we sit down and we say, okay, our biggest risk factors are here, and that is how we structure our audits. But that is not a proactive approach. We need to review all offices.
Martha, the, I think that, I think you're right. I think you do need additional staff. And we have to remember that the type of person that you need to hire is somebody with, with experience, not out of college, because they don't really have the, the experience or the background.
It requires service skills.
Yeah, so you're, you're talking about each person costing a minimum.
Depending on where they've worked?
No, I'm talking.
Even going through college.
No, I mean, in order to do that, to do that right, you got to hire somebody with three to five years' experience and auditing, with an auditing background. Each person's going to run you $80,000, if you include fringe and benefits, okay? So you're looking three, $240,000 minimum, that you're going to need for three auditors. And that's, that I think is what you're going to need at a, at a minimum to do that. Now, you're going to get to everything, but you're getting to everything, you know, very, very late. As has been pointed out, that we're looking at stuff that occurred, you know, 18 months ago. And it's going to continue like that until you bring somebody on board. So as we go through this budget process, we just, you know, I may be off on the number, I don't think so. I think that's pretty close. But I think that in order to do this right, you're going to have to bring some folks in that have the background and have the experience. You know, two folks out of, right out of college are not going to do you any good. You're going to spend a lot of time training them. And they will be good at some point in the future. But you need somebody that's going to come in, that can, you pretty much let them out on the field by themselves with, with very little to, to no supervision at all. And one auditor per, you know, can do that on their own. So unless you're ready to train somebody for two or three years, it does not help our situation today.
That's correct. We need someone with the experience that will have the background to hit the ground running and go out and, and knows how to deal with particular situations.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
The only other, I mean, in some offices, you have not had a response from them. Do we have authority to be able to audit the office? I mean, is there any offices that are like hands-off to the auditor?
No, there are none.
Well, there are.
Well, minimally.
No, 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 legally, legally, I mean, are there any statutory reasons in place why you cannot audit any office in the county?
None to my knowledge. I was reviewing those yesterday. Even adult probation, we receive their claims, and it is our function to determine if the claims are legitimate and if the funds are being spent appropriately, the way they were intended to be. So we have audit oversight over all county offices.
So there's no office in the county that can refuse you legally to you being able to go and count the receipts if there's monies exchanged in the office?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge by Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanchez. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose carries consent. Are there any items under consent that any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately?
Judge, table item H. And pull out item AAA.
roadside assistance.
Item P to pull out.
P?
P as in Paul.
Judge, I have another one for you.
Double C to pull out.
Double X.
Double X to pull out. Frank?
Double C on your consent.
Double C?
Yes, sir.
We pulled it out.
It's already pulled out.
Did you pull P?
I pulled P.
Judge?
You.
On item V, I made some changes, just so you're aware, that, so you can initial the scratchouts.
What item was that?
V as in Victor.
You want to talk about it?
No, no, it's just.
Oh, just you made some changes?
They're changing the state law from Minnesota to Texas.
Let's pull it out real quickly, just so you can explain it. Anything else?
I've got item B.
Hold on. Double J to pull out. Anything else?
I've got item B.
B as in boy. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of item B, C, and D, which will be pulled out to discuss separately? Item H to table, P to discuss separately, V, double C to discuss separately, double J to discuss separately, double N, and double X and AAA to discuss separately. Hear a motion to approve?
One, one question before you do so. On, on item double M, does that include postage?
Well, let's pull that one out. Double M. Do I hear a motion to approve all the other ones? Move by Commissioner Garcia, sign by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion, all in favor? Signify by saying aye, and opposed, item carries, item B. Consideration, authorization to open account with Frost Bank Legal. Question?
The, the reason I pulled this one is, we're, from what I read in here, Bear County isn't getting paid for, I guess, the mental health services that, I'm guessing, the state hospital provides. Is that correct, Martha?
They're having, apparently they're having a hard time collecting from some entities. So they, they're requesting prepayment now, or, or that the, the officer go up there with an actual check to pay at the time.
And what are we paying them, or what, what is the?
We pay them for the hearings on mentals. And we would get, we get billings from, from, from Bear County. And we would process them through accounts payable after the fact.
And so you're talking about the hearings after the initial emergency commitment is done? And then they're evaluated?
The way I understand it, there, there's a hearing that is held here, and then the, either local JP or county courts at law. And if, I, I take it that there's no room for them here locally, so they send them to San Antonio. And when they get there, there's another hearing that's held in order for them to accept them. And so there's a filing fee that has to be paid from the county that's sending them. In the past, they would just do that and then invoice us for whatever had been sent for the month. But now, apparently, they've had problems collecting on some, and so they want to set up this method.
This is not necessarily a problem collected from us.
No, they're requiring this from, from everyone.
In general, okay. And I was just wondering why we would have to pay for, for them to have hearings over there? Because the, the way I understand it is, once the person goes in and becomes a patient, if there's a need for a renewal commitment, at that time, because they have the benefit of having the hospital there locally, I think there's also comes a cost with it. So I'm wondering why we would have to pay them to have a hearing on something that is no longer in our control? See, the, the, when we send them up, either a court has issued an order that they need to go up and stay, or it's a temporary commitment. For the most part, I think the ones that go up there are the 90-day commitments or longer. I don't know that there's a lot of temporary, other than the juveniles. And so what I'm wondering is, are they throwing a cost back on us that we really shouldn't have to be paying? And we are paying? Or is there really a cost that we need to incur here?
I, I believe, I looked at it a few years ago, when, when these costs actually were kind of increasing. It's actually dropped off significantly over the past two years, two, three years. And if I remember correctly, and I guess Legal can research it, that, yes, that they can bill the county of origin from where these individuals are being sent. I, I don't remember the exact statute.
Is it a hearing fee or a filing fee?
It's, it's a filing fee, because we're, we're actually paying the, the district clerk's office for the case filing.
County clerk.
Yes, county clerk.
County clerk.
Yeah, so it's a filing fee.
But, yeah, we can research that, but I remember.
I'd ask that Legal look into that, because once they're there, once they're inpatient, and then there's a need for a recommitment, at that point, I think it becomes their issue because the person is in their county, no longer here.
But according to this, it says that, that it is for the administrative statutory fees. You know, it doesn't say that it's for a hearing, it's just for like a filing fee. Associated statutory fees.
Well, but the agenda item on is to open up a bank account, simply, okay? So the issue that the commissioners are talking about is something else. This is just to open up a bank account.
The bank account to pay a fee that I want to make sure we're supposed to be paying, you know? I don't think, just because we've always paid it, may not be the right reason to.
Well, if you want to table it, we can, we can table it, and y'all can get together and discuss it, because.
Well, we can open the bank account, but I'd ask that Legal look into making sure that we're required to pay these fees.
Yeah, and that, that's all the agenda item is, to open up the bank account. All right? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to open the account and subsequent report to Commissioner's Court on what the fees are we're going to be paying.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Garcia, sign by Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor. Signify by saying aye, and opposed, carries. Item C, consideration and possible approval to exempt the renewal service agreement with Johnson Controls from Cameron County, Order Number 200904013. Who's going to talk about that? Marcelino's, it's Marcelino's item. Commissioner, you have a question? Maybe somebody can answer it.
Yeah, well, why, why are we going around the, the order of the court that says they've got to sign first, especially on a renewal?
Move to table.
Well, I, Judge and Commissioner.
Unless you can answer the question.
I, I can't, but what I can tell you, this is the process that was established by the court. In the order says that if, if a vendor, for whatever reason, refuses to sign first, then we're to put it before the court to let them know, you know, as, because there is that, in the order, say you can go before the court, and the court can, at that time, say, okay, on this one, we will agree to sign first. And so that's why Mr. Marcelino put this on, because apparently Johnson Controls won't sign first. I can tell you that he did initial, he did initial all the scratchouts I made, he just didn't sign first.
Okay, do I hear a motion to table? Signed by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye, and opposed, carries. Item D, consideration and authorization to utilize Texas Mass Contract Number Six.
That's the actual contract.
Move to table.
By Commissioner Sanchez, sign by Commissioner Hernandez to table, all in favor, signify by saying aye, and opposed, carries.
Judge, if we can just bring it back in a little while when Marcelino gets back.
You can go to signature right now?
No, just the discussion.
Which one?
I'm not sure if he needs this now, or it can wait.
Bring it back, before the meeting, we can bring it back. Item H, consideration and approval in agreement with East Rio Honda Water Supply Corporation. Do I hear, no, that's table already, I'm sorry. Item P, consideration and action for the appointment of Marco Antonio Simon, a reserve deputy. I'd like to make a motion to table this. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second? I'll second, all in favor, signify to table. All in favor, signify by saying aye, and opposed, carries. Item V, consideration and possible approval of renewal agreement with Thompson West for online legal research. W, real quick.
They had Minnesota law, and I changed it to Texas. We got permission from West Law that was okay. And also, they had a, a paragraph in there talking about restricting the statute of limitations, which by law, the county, there is no statute of limitations, you can't borrow us at all.
So with those changes, do I hear a motion? By Commissioner Sanchez, sign by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor, signify by saying aye, and opposed, carries. Double C, consideration and authorization to accept grant funds from the Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division. Who pulled that one? Was that one of you guys?
And we had some initial figures that we put out to the court so we could get it. We, we got a grant of $100,000. I went over and we talked about who had the most to do. We put some figures out. What I, up here today is to offer another set of figures for the distribution. We got a bunch of people that were unhappy with the way we did it the first time. But I think maybe this, if I could tell you what a new distribution, I think this would help to soothe some of the demons.
Well, I would hope it would take care of what needs to be done, so that we will be in compliance, not necessarily.
Well, that's, that's the point.
Okay.
You're right. And that was my initial thought, so who had the most left to do, and more money should go there.
Right.
But after talking to some of these people and listening to some of their.
Points?
Points, I guess is a nice way to put it. Maybe this would be a more efficient way to distribute the money. And this is what I would suggest. The Sheriff's Department would go with $5,000.
Versus what?
Seventeen.
Versus 850705.
That's not what Mike, Mike says seventeen.
Mine's the 17,014.
There should be two pages. What would, one is what was asked for.
Oh, it's the backside, okay.
Two is what we actually got.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I didn't see that back page.
Appreciate you saving trees.
Uh, would go to fifteen thousand. For, and, and, and one thing I will point out, these monies that we will get in this grant are to be used for either contract labor or overtime, not equipment. Contract labor or overtime.
Work done.
Yes, sir. Uh, the county clerks and the district clerks would be twenty-eight, four sixty-six, forty-five. And I might add, the district and the county clerks, if you look at the total numbers that have to be fixed for us to give them to the county, those two offices have the most numbers to correct, and that's the reason, really, they're getting the most money. The computer center would go to fifty-seven, eighty-seven, oh five. And then, the district attorney's office would move from thirty-four, five sixty to seventeen, two eight. And that would, we cut ours in half to move some loan right around. That would be my suggestion.
Uh, one question.
Yes, sir.
This grant should get us at the ninety percent by August 1st? If we spend this money?
That's, that's the object, yes, sir. And it's to get to ninety percent by September, and I think the last, oh, it was a couple weeks ago, you and I discussed it, CR43. There's two, two sets of deadlines to this program. There's a deadline for this September, and of course, there's a deadline for next September.
Right.
If we get to the ninety percent this September, then it's just keeping it there going forward.
You okay? You're okay, Mr. Gomis?
Yes, sir.
Now, have you gotten commitment from all the departments that with this distribution, they're going to make it happen?
Well, with this distribution, it will help us get there hopefully quickly, but whether we've got the money at all, we still begin to get there by September, because we have to.
Right.
And it's critical in the grants that we get to the county, we have to.
But, I mean, all these departments are happy with these, or satisfied at least, with this distribution that they're gonna...
No, I'm happy.
Not happy, but satisfied.
They're happier than they were.
Okay.
If they're, if this is your recommendation, I move to approve.
I'll second. Unless there's anyone out there that, from any of the departments that has an objection.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Comment, Tommy?
Well, just, first of all, just, just want to say thanks to Sam, because he kind of stepped up and kind of took charge of, of the group that's been meeting to try to address this very serious problem that we have, and, so, thank you for that. Uh, I'm satisfied that we're going to get something, to be able to do something to try to correct this problem, and I'm going to have Ms. Gomez pass out some of those sheets to you. But, we took it upon ourselves, from the, the juvenile perspective, the, the noncompliance that existed there, to go ahead and, uh, about a month and a half ago, or a month ago, right after we first met, I guess, we went ahead and, and went forward and, and met with the juvenile prosecutor and the juvenile district clerk, and we kind of put a plan in action ourselves, just independently, and we are now in compliance, as you see there, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, are now at above the ninety percentile. So, we're, we're, but it took expenditures to get there. And I guess my closing statement would, would be, is that, well, hopefully, that we can get everyone in compliance, because it's, it's an all or none, you know, if a dog gets, doesn't get there, and we don't get, everybody's got to get there, otherwise, we lose potentially what I would consider millions of dollars to this county. So, I'm hoping that we can all get there. Secondly, is that, once we do get there, and I'm confident, like Sam, that we will somehow, we've got to figure out how to stay there, and honestly, in looking and listening to everything at those meetings, there's not a system in place to do that. And so, that, as we go through the process of getting to where we need to get, there also needs to be a plan in place or developed of how, once we're there, we don't get into this dilemma again, where you're in a situation where potentially, you can lose millions of dollars to this county.
Well, isn't it just a matter of not closing a file? In other words, not making it a disposed case until everything's done with?
That's a simple way to put it, but it's much more complicated than that, and there's people much smarter than me can probably explain it in more detail. But it, it's a lot, there's a lot of factors involved, and that's why we are where we are, because it's not that simple.
Okay, because I know that the courts are really, I guess, strict about wanting to dispose the cases, because that's how they keep their stats, is how many dispositions do they do each month? And in order to dispose a case, if we made this part of the requirement, in other words, you have to have full reporting compliance before you can dispose it, wouldn't that in effect, I mean, as difficult as it may be to get all the, you know, departments down the line to do it, but wouldn't that ultimately be the control to say, okay, you know, 138th Court, before you dispose this file, you've got to make sure that all this is in compliance, and if not, you send it back to the department that needs to, to do it?
Well, theoretically, that sounds easy and good, but, I mean, there's so many counties in the state that are noncompliant right now. We're not the only ones. The majority are noncompliant.
No, I'm just talking about Cameron.
Well, but, I'm, I'm using as, as an example, is that, obviously, that there's a problem for all, that many counties to be in noncompliance, including us. Harris County somehow has managed to, and you see the size of Harris County, has managed to stay above the ninety percent to now. So, I think certainly, they serve as an example of maybe a method that they have that we could use to, to create a method of us staying in compliance. But my, my thoughts on that is that there has to be someone actually responsible somehow for that oversight for all, over all the agencies, so we can make sure the left hand and the right hand are constantly knowing what's going on, so we won't get, because there's a lot of left and right hand stuff here.
So, like, here, for instance, when you say that juvenile's ninety percent compliant, are you talking about the court system over there? Are you talking about the prosecutor?
The arrest records.
It's arrest records. To simplify, you get arrested, you get a number, finished with your court, whether you get convicted, not convicted, whatever, your court is open, you start here, you get here, it's got a council act, and there's a bunch of little steps that go in between there, and that's, well, we didn't do, we didn't do those steps, and some of them didn't get reported, so, when you pull, if, if Sam Smith got convicted of something, you go DPS and run Sam Smith's name, what it'll come back and show on the TCNSC view is, it'll show you arrests, and then it'll say, your court data provided, so you don't know what happened. That's the whole.
And so, you're saying at juvenile, you're ninety percent on everything?
Well, we're up to, we just completed 2009, and we should be working on 2010 as we speak, and I know that we're going to get to the 2011, easily within the timeframe.
Now, what happens, again, in the juvenile system, when you have someone that's underage that gets arrested, and then their charge doesn't get filed against them? They turn 21, and records are sealed, and you haven't done this. Are you going to open that up and go back and, and report, or how, how are you going to fix that? How do you reconcile that?
That's a complicated question. That sounds like a lawyer's question.
Good question. I, I would ask for...
I mean, do you automatically, when they turn 21, destroy all the files?
No, sir.
Sure.
And they're not going to notify us till they have that record available already to them, so it's already in their possession.
So, you're just going to have it open?
Yes, and then, and if I may, this whole process is a statute. Chapter 60 mandates all entities to submit this information, the arrest, the prosecution, the outcome, because we have these, you know, whether they're juveniles or adults, want to go get a job, or want to go to college, and so, we need to put that outcome, whether it was dismissed, or deferred, or, or probation.
Well, and, and that's why I bring it, I mean, recently, I had someone call me, an old client, that said, hey, my case was dismissed, it was never filed as a felony, they offered him a Class C, he took the Class C, but there was no record of what happened. And he's saying, why do I have an FBI number if my case was never presented to the juvenile court? And why doesn't it show a disposition? He couldn't get in the military because they thought he still had a pending felony.
Well, it's, it's the low compliance, and we haven't been entering the dispositions on those cases.
Okay. So, going back to that situation where they turned 21, you haven't updated any of those with this ninety percent?
Well, right now, we're updating everything that there, that the state is requiring us to mandate in order to be in compliance. We're not even trying to get to a hundred percent, we're just getting to the compliance.
To the ninety.
To the ninety percentile, and then we're moving to the next one, in order to beat that timeline, because it is a very short timeline.
Okay.
All right.
And I just have one comment for the court to be aware of. If Cameron County does not, does not reach the ninety percent, these $100,000 will...
Go back.
Go back. Will be, we will be required to send them back to state.
We approve.
I think we've already done that. All in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries.
And if it doesn't get to ninety percent, it's going to go back to your departments.
Item H, consideration authorization to advertise for the following, collection of delinquent taxes, I mean, I'm sorry, delinquent fines and court costs. Who pulled that?
I don't know. Move to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides.
Excuse me, Judge, just for a second.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to, in, in light of recent developments in our SCOP law program...
Uh-huh.
I, I just became aware of this, we need to get, you know, review this and sort of merge it in some way.
You want to table it? You want to have us table it?
Yeah, before you take action, can we do that, please?
Can we do it subject to legal, Bruce?
We could, yes, with a modification to the RFP, you bet.
I would make it subject to legal, as long as it satisfies you.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Gatz, same by Commissioner Hernandez.
Judge.
Yes, yes.
Before you approve it, the reason we pulled it out was the, the scoring on the RFP. I think Mike Forbes sent you all an email yesterday with changes to that scoring with regards to the fee.
Well, this is to advertise.
And the RFP is, is, is there as well.
To advertise for the following, so, did the scoring mechanism change as the RFP went out? This is for the RFP, no?
Right. The RFP has been drafted, and it's before you, and the scoring changed based on Mike's recommendation.
Yeah, but that's part of the RFP process.
That's correct.
I mean, that, yeah, that's fine. Okay. Motion to second, all in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries. Double M, consideration authorization to award bids, RFPs, RFQs for the following, laser printing of tax statements and envelopes.
My question was, does that include postage?
Does that include postage?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the postage was separate.
Separate, okay.
Separate, okay.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, do I have a second? By Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries. Item double N, consideration authorization to award bids for safety prescription glasses. Who pulled that one?
Oh, I did. The, the reason I pulled it is, we're not using the lowest bidder, and...
Mike, you want to explain?
Yes, sir.
Really, it's the lowest and best bid.
That's correct.
Okay?
You'll see some letters attached. I got with the safety officer and the HR director, and there's three bids here. Two bids only service or have locations in the Brownsville area. The, the bidder that they recommend in Eye Air Optical has a, a location in the Harlingen area, as well as Brownsville. So, what they recommend is to utilize Eye Air, because it services the county employees in both the north end of the county, as well as, as the Brownsville area, and the employees would not have to be traveling to Brownsville from Harlingen to have their eye prescriptions addressed.
And, and my point really on this was only to point out the fact that we don't necessarily always have to go with the lowest bid, but we take into consideration the provider's geographic location and, and the consideration of having someone local versus having someone from out of town.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I think the law is lowest and best.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to make sure that was the issue, because there's another item coming up, that I wanted to discuss.
Do I hear motion to approve?
Some move.
Same by Commissioner Sanchez, I make Mr. Gatz all in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries. Double X, JP, Judge Sally Gonzalez and staff to travel to South Padre Island.
I, I pulled this item because we had the situation last year where the offices were being closed for the entire week, and it looks like that's the same issue again, that the entire staff is going to South Padre. I guess while I'm here, I'll ask about if they've at least started working on...
The Odyssey?
Odyssey program. Have they taken any?
Well, not only that, though, have they trained on the Odyssey program? I think they need to go to that training first.
I, I, I agree. I, I think, I think the issue that we have also, apart from the Odyssey program, is shutting down an office for a week, or four days, and I think what, what this is.
It's Monday through, Sunday through Thursday, actually, so, the conference, so...
Yeah.
I think we should table this item.
And I agree, but I want to ask a question. Are we the hosting county? Do you know?
Well, if it's in Cameron, I assume we are.
Uh, but even if it is...
But whether it is or it isn't, I mean...
We can't close an office down.
Yeah, the, the judge can go, I mean, but to take the whole staff when they have not actively participated in the Odyssey training is, there's a consequence.
Well, but can we, I mean, do we have authority to tell an elected official, you can't go? I mean, we could not approve the expense, but can we tell them they can't go?
Well, I don't think they're going to go. Well, I don't know, I mean, yeah, we, we can...
But are we really telling, we're not telling her she can't go, I think we're telling her she can't close her office.
So, they're, they're not claiming any expense here, Martha?
There's no expense involved.
No expense involved. They can bring it back, so, sorry.
I had a motion to table by Commissioner Hernandez.
This, the travel request will not require meals, lodging, or mileage expenses.
The only thing it does, if there's an injury, they're covered by workers' comp.
Or, well, and it shuts down the offices.
And shuts down the offices.
That's the biggest concern we had last year.
Okay.
Last year, I think they closed the office for two weeks, on, on two separate conferences.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second to table? Second, all in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries. Triple A, consideration authorization and approval to purchase a 2012 Caprice utilizing Operation Stone Garden. Who wanted to pull that? Martha?
I requested it be pulled. I talked to Sergeant Briseño yesterday to ask him about this. This is a vehicle that would be purchased with Operation Stone Garden funds. This is, they, the Operation Stone Garden only covers the purchase of the vehicle. It does not cover the operating expenses of the vehicle. This will not be a replacement vehicle, this will be an additional vehicle, and usage of this vehicle to the constable will be limited to the times that they are working this, this grant only. So, I asked him for a funding source to pay for the other operating expenses of this vehicle.
Judge?
Commissioners? Well, we have Fund 90 if there's money to be needed for that.
Can you use Fund 90 money for that?
Yes.
Okay, next time I think you...
Is it one vehicle or three?
It's just one, and after the grant's over, I mean, hopefully, the car will be awarded to us, and we can return another one.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, just substitute it then.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Move to approve.
I also think the purchase of the, the purchase price of the vehicle exceeds the amount awarded by the grant, so, I'm assuming the balance will come from 900 as well? The purchase of the vehicle?
Because it's the lifetime thing.
Right. Okay.
You almost have a lot of money in that Fund 90 account.
It's running, we're running low already.
Boy, if you keep buying stuff, of course it is.
We're going to need some of that money for the communication.
Moved by Commissioner Gatz, do I have a second? By Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signed by saying aye, and opposed carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, under salary schedules.
You have the budget amendments placed in front of you. First page is a budget amendment for a grant for the Health Department. The following pages will be line item transfers, mostly operational. You've got the DA's office, treasures, purchasing, tax office, constable precincts, public works, Operation Stone Garden. In Operation Stone Garden, on the page two, there's 135,000 in equipment that is being[1789.25] In Operation Stone Garden, on page two, there's 135,000 in equipment that is being reallocated to contractual, and that is to cover purchases of equipment that other municipalities are participating in this grant with, are gonna be buying their equipment, and we will reimburse them once we get copies of the invoices. So, hence, we are moving those funds to contractual.
So, this is, because we're administering-
Yes, we're the oversight, yes.
Now, going back to the idea of what we talked about with the auditors, is there any way for us to get a portion of this grant for the oversight?
No.
They won't allow us to do that?
No.
Okay.
Correct.
Just thinking outside the box.
The following page, page three, you've got a grant, line item transfer for JJ AEP, which is the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program. They have exceeded, they project program revenues and revenues from the state that will also come in for reimbursement of juveniles, so that's due to increased cost. Then, on that page also, you have the, we're presenting the budget amendment again for the DA's office on the hard drive replacement. That is gonna be paid out of Fund 900, so that is the one that was discussed last week as well.
Did the computer department have the opportunity to evaluate what had occurred?
At that point, they had not. I don't know if they have. At this point, I'm not sure. I have, I think Sam Smith is here with the DA's office to address it. I don't know if anybody from IT is here to address it.
Yes, the bid went through Joe over at the computer center.
Well, I don't think it was a bidding process that was in question. There was the, the idea of two drives going out at the same time in a suspicious week after a lot of activities.
Okay. There was only one hard drive in there when it should have had two hard drives. It's set up, the server is set up to have two hard drives, so when one does go bad, you don't lose your server, which is what has happened. That's, could I ask the same question today? Why do we need two? Because it's set up for two.
Wasn't there a question of taking the old hard drive?
Right.
Was there an issue on that?
And having IT look at it, wasn't it?
Yes, there was an issue about the old hard drive, that would be returned to IT, or are you-
Sure, I mean, we-
Not a problem?
We would give it back to-
Okay. The whole issue was preservation of whatever information was on there.
Was in, was in.
Right. It just was, the questioning came in, or the item came on, a hard drive is being replaced shortly after legal events are occurring, and it just didn't sound, the timing was just kinda strange.
This, this is a hard drive in a computer, it's a hard drive in a server, so it's a little bit different, but you're right, okay.
It's a storage system of information, right.
Just like copiers have storage systems also.
Sam, why didn't the old server have two, any reason?
Why did it? It was set up for two, but it only had one in it.
Why? Like, why, you know?
I guess, because the other one, he can probably answer that question for us.
It's a server that's a few years old, and it's running our-
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
It's running our electronics subpoena system. The hard drive, or better yet, the computer center told us that the hard drive is reporting a failure, and that means that it hasn't failed yet. The drive is still running but about to fail, and we can't tell if it's gonna fail today, tomorrow. So, all the data that's in there is still accessible, everything is still working.
But it could get lost if you don't get a backup.
Exactly. And the data is run on a nightly backup by computer center, so everything is fine. And so, what we're doing is purchasing two new drives, so we can pop them in and copy the data over, and we don't lose any downtime.
Okay.
Okay.
That answers my question.
Thank you.
Anything else, Martha?
The last page on the budget, on the line item transfers, you'll see the Sheriff's Department Drug Forfeiture. They're gonna utilize $6,300 worth of federal forfeiture funds to put a door on the warehouse that they are using over there. So, I want to advise the court that they will be securing that building now with a door. And Constable Precinct Seven utilizing $8,000 worth of fund balance in drug forfeiture, and the rest are-
What is the building being used for?
The Sheriff's Department, I believe, has taken over the building to use it for storage of-
Of what?
Seized items. It's being used as a storage facility right now.
And it didn't have a door before, or this is just a newer door?
It didn't have a door.
Oh, the RV to put it indoors instead of leaving it out?
Outside.
That makes sense, preserve county equipment. And what are the small tools that are being purchased by constable?
That is, the light bars and that, for the vehicle that they're gonna be getting. They're paying for it out of 900.
The, what?
Light bars.
Light bars, for the patrol unit.
Don't they usually take the light bars off the old and put them on the new ones?
I think it's a different model or a different, I don't think the light bars fit.
Okay, I mean, are they gonna, are these, and are all these vehicles gonna have decals on them, or are they using the magnetic, so?
Unless they come to court and the court approves undercover vehicle.
Decals on all of them.
Well, but they don't have decals, I mean, that's the problem.
I think that at a previous meeting, we said that we wanted decals on all cars unless they were brought to Commissioners Court for an exclusion.
Unless the court allows them to be excluded.
And how do we enforce that on the constable's vehicles? Because there's-
The way you can enforce it is getting vehicle maintenance on board and telling them that all of these vehicles prior to them being released to the constables for usage, that they have to be properly marked, because they review and check the vehicles and release them for usage.
Okay.
Martha, real quick, before Javier gets on, didn't we pass a policy back several years ago in terms of standardized lettering and signage for specifically, I think, law enforcement vehicles, constable vehicles?
Yes.
Correct? So, what has changed in terms of our policy from then to now?
Some of the law enforcement agencies have come before Commissioners Court and requested that these, that particular vehicles be unmarked, and the court has approved those.
Yeah, unmarked if they were for a specific reason, if they were undercover, I mean, some of these constable may go undercover with a marked vehicle, it just doesn't make any sense, right?
If I remember correctly, the Commissioners Court has approved new vehicles to be unmarked for constables.
So, if we want them all marked, we have to put another item on to say everything gets marked?
I think the policy needs to be looked at and changes need to be made.
Well, but I think there's a difference between totally unmarked and the consistency in the signage, because if they're unmarked, they have no signage, correct? If they're unmarked.
Correct.
Right? But the issue is having different decals, different slogans, different color striping, et cetera.
Well, I know that some of them wanna have the colors of the local high school, and they've made those requests to change them, right?
What?
I have not seen those.
I've not heard that either.
Aren't the colors made different? No? Okay, well, then why aren't they all the same?
They should be the same.
I mean, they should all be identical across the board, as far as I'm concerned. And they should all be marked. And, you know, with all this forfeiture money that they have, buy one or two undercover vehicles, leave them at fleet, and when you need a car for undercover operation, you go get it. Other, I mean, because I had, someone called me, some from out of town, I don't know who it was, but complaining that constables were using in Cameron County unmarked vehicles to do private work off time. And I thought, well, I think all of our vehicles should be marked, I don't know that we have any unmarked.
And I think that should include all of our vehicles that are part of grants too.
Everything marked.
Should be marked.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Okay, so then what do we do here? Do you want to add, you want to instruct Lee to get with all the vehicles, start marking them, or what?
I think probably the better idea would be to have a budget amendment for the next meeting and have the policy, have the policy that the court has in place and-
Enforced.
With any recommended changes and have vehicle maintenance here and, you know, give guidance on how to-
Okay, we'll have an item on the next meeting.
All right. Anything else, Martha?
There's a salary schedule for the Health Department, I believe it's the Health Department.
HIDA.
Yeah, I'm sorry, HIDA. Yes, this is a position that's 100% funded by HIDA, and it's for the 2012 year, for your approval.
And it's, what is it, what are they doing with that?
It is for the oversight of the HIDA grants for Cameron County.
Drug Task Force.
Right, but what, are we increasing her salary, or we're adding?
No, it's the same. It's just, we had a salary schedule for 2011, and we had not brought the one to Commissioners Court for 2012, so this is for 2012. It stays the same.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ganso, second by Commissioner Sanchez to approve item 4A. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Claims.
Payroll dated May 25th for $1,668,338.36. Payroll dated May 25th for $2,310.29. Caremark medical claims for $366,129.95. Warrants number 279923 through 279959, number 279962 through 280259. Warrants number 280262 through 280475. Warrants number 280480 through 280617. There are three voided warrants. One is warrant number 280410 for $1,100. Warrant number 279748 from the prior week, which is being requested to be voided at this time. Warrant number 280420 for $72 to be voided, for your approval.
What are the reasons for the void, Martha?
Warrant number 280420, it is a claim for $72, and that is being voided because that a department went to a vendor and utilized their services when they had not been given the bid by Commissioners Court, so we are making them put it on the agenda for Commissioners Court approval for next week as a separate agenda item. Warrant number 279748, that was the check, the claim that was presented last week where we had received funds in 390, and we were transferring them to RMA. We had been told that all of those funds belonged to RMA. Upon receiving the backup, we realized that one of those claims had actually been paid out of general, not out of general fund, but rather out of the West Rail Project, which is Fund 710. So, and the other part did belong to RMA, so we voided that check, and we have reissued it, and it is in the claims that are, that were read in today. Warrant number 280410 was a, an invoice that was received and accounts payable for payment, and it was an RMA claim, and it should have been processed individually, separately by RMA, so that one is being voided as well.
Okay. And this all comes from RMA's payments coming to the county and then us sending them the payment?
It comes, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to approve claims? Please note my abstention on the affidavits I provided.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Ganso, second by Commissioner Sanchez. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Do I need to adjourn this meeting and open up the other one?
Yes, I think it would be appropriate to, yeah, to adjourn temporarily, open the other one, as we've noticed it timely.
And then we come back. Do I hear motion to temporarily adjourn this meeting? By Commissioner Sanchez, same by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor. Signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. We are adjourning this meeting. Special meetings today's date, 11:30 a.m. Do I hear, no, that's it, we are open.
Are we adjourned the meeting?
We just adjourned this one, okay? Do I hear mo, now, that's all we need to do, then just come back to this one.
We didn't adjourn it, we just suspended it, right? Because you still have items to go on.
Well, we adjourned it, then I'm gonna, that's why I asked, we just need to adjourn it, he says yes.
I don't think, I think if you adjourn it, the meeting's over.
No, I can reopen it.
We just temporarily, the motion was to temporarily adjourn the regular meeting and take up the special.
Okay, I didn't hear it's temporary.
Okay, all in, okay, we're back. So then just reopen up the meeting.
Motion to reopen.
Reopen the regular meeting by Commissioner Sanchez, same by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Minutes, March 15th, March 29th, special and regular. You guys looked at them?
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Ganso, same by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item D.
Judge, judge, we need to recess this meeting and then start-
Oh, recess the special meeting?
Recess the regular meeting.
What, we did that, Bruce called it a temporary adjournment, but he meant recess.
Yes, okay, so now you're, you're into the special meeting?
No, we're back into the regular, we just opened the special.
We opened special, and then we reopened the regular meeting.
So, you recessed the special.
So, it's like, it's like two ships traveling together, do we?
They're both open right now.
Yeah.
You need to recess the special, then, to go back into the other one.
Aye, lawyers.
Move to recess special meeting.
Lawyers, that's Robert's rules.
Yeah, but Robert never comes by. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Sanchez to recess?
Sess, special meeting.
By Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor to recess, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item D, consideration and back to the regular, we've already done that, right?
Yes.
Okay. No, no, but open this other meeting.
Yes, you reopen.
Consideration approval to purchase a Hyundai R250 LC9 excavator for public works.
Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Ganso, second by Commissioner Benavides.
Discussion.
Discussion.
The negotiated amount is different than what is in the backup.
It's lower, right?
The amount is $108,524.
Versus?
$115,524.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item E.
Now, just to get a clarification, that money that we're gonna be using, is it gonna go back to those funds once the reimbursement comes in?
I believe this one, it's coming from the TDRA, but then when, when we do the colonial project and get reimbursed by textile.
And I just want to make sure the money's gonna go back to TDRA, because if not, we lose out.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Item E, consideration, okay, I know he needs to go to another meeting. Consideration approval of commercial lease agreement between Cameron County DA's office and Harale Properties, Inc.
Judge, Commissioners, there were some changes that need to be made. We would ask that the court approve this subject to the legal.
Do I hear motion to approve subject to the legal changes?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, same by Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item F, report on the status of the repair work to the Cameron County radio communication system.
Just wanted to give you an update on what's happened in the last couple of weeks, reference to the emergency communications repairs. Remember, we were hit by lightning on April the 20th and took out the system, basically destroyed 17 cards of the system. The central electronics bank was damaged, and all the consoles went down. We were relying on backup base radios for our main communications. We had since been able to get one console up at each of the public safety answering points that needed to be on the system. That would be the Sheriff's Department, South Padre Island, Port Isabel, and Los Fresnos. Additionally, we were able to secure some loner cards from the city of Laredo through Tri-County. Uh, their, their, um, commu, they were able to communicate and, and acquire those cards. Mr. Copeland went up and picked up those cards and brought them back and has installed them. We also found, uh, they, they only had two of the cards that we needed. Those, uh, those are CIE cards, uh, central interface electronic cards. They did not have one other component that we needed and that was a, a COIM. That's a console operator interface module. So we had to buy that. That was seven thousand plus dollars, uh, that were, were, came out of the fifty thousand initially that we asked for. Still have a little bit of money, but not very much. So we were able to get one more console at the Sheriff's Department up and operational. And, um, we, we're still hoping to do more, but the, the problem is we don't have the funds to go and buy more coins. And we're not sure if the, the, uh, county wants us to go ahead and spend more money when we're hoping to actually, uh, to purchase a new system and start moving towards, uh, digital communications, which we have to be at in two and a half years anyway. I also have Mr. Copeland here, if there are any questions that you'd like to ask that are above my expertise.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries, item G, consideration approval of the purchase of a new radio equipment for the Cameron County radio communication system?
Okay, um, we actually had a proposal that was turned in by Motorola, which was provided to all of y'all. You should have all gotten a bon, binder like this. And in, in this binder, um, under section three is pricing. And they pro, proposed three different options. Uh, I'm gonna ask Motorola to come up and, and explain those options, uh, rather than trying to go through that and maybe missing some of the important points.
County Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your time. Um, the three options that we had proposed, uh, initially was, uh, the first option was just the replacement of the existing console network that has been damaged. And it would be a replacement with an MCC seventy-five hundred IP console-based package. Um, this console package would allow you to connect back into the regional network also and start that migration to, to the, uh, Project Twenty-Five, uh, regional network. Um, also give you full, full functionality and a lot more functionality with the, you know, the, going forth, uh, as the county decides that, uh, migration to the Project Twenty-Five's system. So that second option then would be that inclusive of the first option, which is the replacement of the dispatch, complete, uh, forward-position dispatch in the, the Sheriff's Office. And provide for the functionality for the, uh, Port Isabel, Port, uh, I guess it'd be Port Isabel, South Padre Island, and Los Fresnos to be added to, to, to come back into the system. So, uh, of course, they've been proposed their own, uh, network equipment to do that, um, but currently they, they do operate off of the, the Sheriff's Dispatch. So they are connected, interconnected with, uh, what we refer to as remote ops. So, the second option that we, we propose then would include that first option, but also then replace all of your current subscriber equipment with the latest, uh, digital radio equipment. Be Apex portables, uh, three hundred and fifty portables, a hundred and sixty-eight mobiles. And of course, the portables and the mobiles that we're proposing would be ones that would carry well into the future, uh, and meet all of the requirements for Phase Two, Project Twenty-Five Phase Two, which will be something that will be coming about in, in about, uh, two thousand and eighteen, in that timeframe. So, and then Phase Three is just a, a, another, or I say Phase Three, I'm sorry, Option Three would just be this Option One, replacing all of the dispatch consoles again and a different model radio. It's currently what's being used, uh, with the Sheriff's Office. Um, it's, it's definitely a model that's, uh, been in operation and proven in law enforcement, uh, you know, and serving law enforcement for a number of years. The, the, it's a little bit lesser expensive than the, the Option Two, um, but it does not have the ability to have the TDMA or the, the future, um, meeting the future Project Twenty-Five requirements.
So with that, excuse me, what would, if we did Option Three, just to say we did Option Three, then obviously in two thousand and fifteen or whenever it is in the near future, we have to switch over. What would that increase, what would the increase of cost be to us? Assuming that Option Three is up and running, would this becomes necessary for us to change over? What would be the cost of upgrade?
Don't know exactly, I mean, there's actually the, there's, there's no mandate to say that these radios wouldn't carry you beyond, uh, twenty, whatever, twenty fifteen, twenty eighteen. Um, the, so there is no, I mean, it'd be replacement of your subscribers as they need to be replaced.
Okay.
Um, there's no mandate to say that you have to go to, uh, TDMA. It's really based on the demand that you're gonna have for, for frequency or spectrum in, in the area. So, if you wanna increase or if you have an increase or need to increase the capacity on your radio communication network, then there's only a, you know, a finite spectrum that's available. So, you know, you have to start looking at going to digital and then, and then going to a Phase Two. So, it's, it's hard, you know, it's just a replacement of your subscriber radios is what it would be.
Would we have to change them when we get to twenty eighteen?
And, and again, I, I would say that they would be dependent on, you know, what, it wouldn't necessarily have to be changed. You, you would end up, um, taking a look at, there's different ways of handling it, I guess. So, I, I don't wanna say that they, you have to abandon them automatically. Um, you know, there's, there's different ways of being able to handle the, uh, make the, the system where it can do TDMA and FDMA and, you know, dynamically, um, you know, operate in both modes. So, it's not a matter of having to throw them away, it's a matter of, you know, the, the subscribers, they're, the subscribers that we're talking about there have been in operation for a number of years. The, the phase, the Option Two that we gave you is the, the latest platform of subscribers, so, so they're gonna be, they're gonna be manufactured longer. They're gonna be, uh, available for, you know, parts and accessories and that for a longer period of time is what it amounts to.
Can I make one comment?
One other thing about going with the Apex model, which is the Option Two, is that those radios have the ability to do more than one type of frequency at the same time. You can have VHF, UHF, and eight hundred, uh, seven hundred and eight hundred on that same radio. It could switch inter, in, uh, back and forth. So, right now where you have to go to a specialized talk group to talk to the states or the, the, the state or feds, you could do that on your radio, uh, and, and, and be talking to the same talk group directly to them.
Well, and my question really is more, kinda what Commissioner Hernandez was saying, between Option Two and Three. Is it gonna end up costing us more if we go Option Two now in twenty eighteen, when we've gotta get to what has to be done then to get Option Two to work? Or is it gonna be the same cost as we look at right now?
My suggestion is that the best thing for us to do is to go ahead and plan for doing what we need to now. Uh, we would ask that you consider, uh, the backbone plus Option Two's radios, which are the, the latest, uh, the stuff that's gonna be around the longest. Because we'll have to replace them less often and, uh, we'll have longer life on them than we want on the others.
Commissioner, if I, if I may, uh, there's, there's one other consideration, and that the, the portable that's in Option Three, uh, again, it's been in Motorola manufacturing for a number of years now. So, within probably, and hadn't been announced and we don't have a, a definite date that we're gonna stop discon, discontinue the manufacture of it. But once we do, then there's just a certain timeframe that we can actually maintain those radios or continue to support them. So, you're talking about, um, that's the real difference between Option Two and Three and, and other than the fact that, you know, you have, uh, the latest in being able to go into the Phase Two. But you do have, uh, probably within the next couple of three years, you're gonna have those being phased out, so. Um, whereas the Apex is, is a model that is the current model that is, you know, the platform that we're now building on. It is the fourth generation too, so, and it's specifications and all, it, it's, it, it has, uh, it's, it's a lot better unit as far as the specs go.
Option Two.
Option Two is, yes, sir.
Okay, well, and maybe because of the way you numbered them, I have them escalating in the wrong order. Option Two would probably have been best as being the third option, which is the complete package, the best option versus.
I can appreciate that.
Option Three will get you by for a while, but in time it'll phase out. And that's, that was my question, so, and then I was gonna want, I was wondering, why is that cheaper than Option Two then if?
Yeah, and, and I apologize for the, uh, the confusion there.
No problem.
Alright, Chuck, recommendation?
Yes, sir, if, if the court can see its way forward, we would like to propose Option Two, which would be the purchase of the backbone and the digital radios to begin the, uh, the migration. Additionally, I wanna say that we had a meeting with the other jurisdictions that, that are, uh, ha, have an issue with this, Port Isabel, South Padre, and Los Fresnos, to let them know about this. Because if we make this move, it will mean that they will have expenses too. They'll have to upgrade their consoles or they'll be relying strictly on base radios. They don't necessarily have to buy the digital radio today, uh, but it's probably a good idea for them to start that migration also. But it's something we all have to do in the future.
The, are there financing options through Motorola?
Yes, sir, they, they were offered a, a financing, financial package just like we were.
No, no, I'm asking about ours.
Yes, sir, the, if you look at the, the, that, uh, pricing package, uh, Mr. Martin, I think can, can, uh, explain that better, uh, but there are three different options. There's a five-year, a seven-year, and a ten-year option. And on all three of those, we would not have to pay anything this year. It would give us one year to, to, uh, plan our strategy, go offer bonds, uh, certificates of obligation, or whatever it is that we're deciding that it's gonna be the way we pay for it.
Is there a maintenance package?
Uh, yes, there is.
Is it included with this, uh?
Ms. Martin?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we, in fact, in, in the package that we included, um, under the options, we also included what the projected maintenance, uh, fees would be or the cost for maintaining that network. And, so they were included in there for, you can, you can understand the, uh, the total amount that, uh, would need to be budgeted by the county.
Okay, I haven't had time to read it all, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna put it on the record.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. You know, it was, it's inclusive.
How, how many radios are we talking here?
We have eight hundred and sixteen radios on our system. Those are mobiles, portables, and base radios.
And this would, so Option Three would be replacing all of those?
Well, we, we have, we have some radios that we had already purchased. And the radios that we already purchased, those would be slapped with, uh, a software upgrade. And depending on when they were purchased, they have different levels of upgrade that may be necessary. That's why the, the budget figures that, uh, are provided are the maximum that you might have to pay. So, we'd ask that you could, uh, consider saying you would, you would authorize up to this amount. So, if we, if we need to spend less, we'll spend less. Uh, but you, you'd have a, a, you'd have a, a software upgrade and then you'd have a pro, programming cost to, to put those radios on the system. And one other thing that we don't know, uh, how it's gonna play out is the regional radio system. There may be an expense associated with us being on the ra, regional radio system. Well, there will be expense, but, uh, and that's based on how many radios there are. Right now, they're charging for part-time subscribers, two dollars a month. And for full-time subscribers, they're charging ten dollars a month to be on the ra, regional radio system. And we have one other issue that we need to tell you about is that's the annual fees that we have to pay for our tower usage. We have two rental agreements that are, amount to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Right now, we're, we, uh, we're not charging because we had a grant from the nine-one-one district, but that, this is the last year of that grant. And we'll need to go back to paying that and we'll probably be charging subscriber fees to the little cities again.
Chuck, I was told at one time that, uh, there were some of the other, um, entities in the area would like to come on with us if possible, that we could, I think it's actually where we, if we could build our own towers, save that fee and have other cities on our towers, it would be a wash. It would pay for the radios and pay for the towers and everything and we could, without even talking about a tax increase, we could, you know.
It is an option. I, I don't know that we can say that we're gonna do that today, but it is something we definitely need to, to consider, how we can, uh, conserve those funds and, and try to, maybe even, uh, rent to other subscribers so we can make money off of it.
Uh, the reason I said it, I want it on the table. That's why, that's why I'm making it public. I think it's a really good idea. It's worth looking at, Judge, to see if there's a possible way to actually turn this into a little, uh.
The two towers we pay on today are, are increasing three percent a year, and so it keeps going up and up.
And you've been paying that for how long?
We've been paying it for over ten years now.
Yeah.
So, well, since two thou, no, I'm sorry, not, not ten years, uh, since two thousand and four.
Let's pick it up, put another, other item on to talk about that later on.
Yes, sir.
So we're on the, so we're on the subject.
We actually have a presentation on that we, we wanna do as a workshop for y'all.
Pete?
Judge, uh, just for the court's information, um, depending on what financing option we select, uh, normally we get about one point four, one point five million annually from the general fund that we use for equipment list. Uh, so, again, depending on, on whether it's three, five, ten years, uh, it's gonna take a good chunk of that money that we use for the equipment list from the general fund, uh, for this particular, um, acquisition. Um, I'm not sure, you know, whether issuing debt is, is an option at this point, because then you do that over a twenty-year period and I'm not sure what the life of this is.
Of the radio is.
But, I mean, it's something that we can look at. I don't know if we need to decide that today or.
Well, let, let me ask you this, if we buy this system and use the old radios we have without replacing all of them, will it still work?
We act, actually that, uh, so what we had is in, in Option One, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Option One will allow you to change out the dispatch to get your dispatch functioning, uh, back in operation. And I, I guess that's the, that's the key, that, that's the part that you're currently, you know, that's just been damaged.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up is this, clearly we don't have the money, we didn't anticipate this. Uh, but as you observed earlier, you know, we had one constable's office come up and wanna use forfeiture funds to buy a car. To me, I think it would be in their interest to have the latest radios. So if we could have them participate or help defray some of the costs, 'cause here I see the majority of the cost, the two point five million, is radios. And so if, if we can get participation from the agency saying, "Look, we're gonna put the backbone up, but we can't afford to buy all these radios, can y'all contribute?" Uh, if not, our option could be, well, you know what? We'll give each constable maybe one of these new radios. Let them have one new one that'll run on the new system. Let them use the old ones on this new system. And if they ever wanna, you know, buy more radios, they can transfer some of that money. Uh, and then have the system in place so it's already accessible. Because, you know, the problem we have, like Pete said, we can't issue bonds to buy radios that aren't gonna be worth it around twenty years from now.
And, and that's why, Commissioners, we did, we did, uh, we did put in a, a finance option in there, uh, through the Motorola Finance Corp., uh, or Credit Corp. And, and it's very, very competitive. It's a municipal lease, uh, and I believe that y'all probably did it when you first bought your radio system. Uh, may have been Brownsville, I'm sorry, but it, um, you know, about twenty years ago. Um, but anyway, it is available and we did present that as a package to you. The interest rates are, are very, um, I guess they're very competitive. They, as far as I, and I'm not the finance guy by any means, but we can do a hundred percent of the acquisition and we can do it up to somewhere around fifteen years. So, uh, knowing and understanding, you know, the, the system that we're talking about, Motorola Finance would, you know, feels very comfortable with being able to provide, uh, the county with a very competitive rate. And, and it's one that also, if you decide to in a year, uh, and, and we did make these payments because we understand you do not have the budget. We, we made them set up, or set it up to where they would, it'd be in the rear type payments. So in other words, we won't have a payment due for a year.
Till our next fiscal budget.
Until your next fiscal budget year. And we can, we can work with you and, and your, your office to make sure that, you know, we're, you know, work through that to make sure that it, uh, meets, meets those requirements. And if you decide that at the end of the first year, you wanna pay it off entirely, then there's no penalty, uh, no penalty to do so. So, it, it gives you some flexibility and some options that you can go ahead and, and get into the network and, and upgrade everything right now while the, while the need is there and, and still have that option to be able to pay it off at, uh, you know, how, if you decide to do bonds or something in the future.
Judge, Judge and Commissioner, there's one thing that, you know, we, you said it earlier, Commissioner Sanchez, that we're the eleventh largest county in the state, in the state of Texas and we continue to try to Band-Aid our way in, you know, into next year. At some point, you need to find a way to make it work, either through building towers and charging people and making it its own little profit center. But it can't always be, no, or we can't do it, or well, there's no way, there's gotta be a way. And I think if we study it long enough, or quickly, very quickly, we, this is a, a safety issue for many, many people all over this county, as far as the deputies and the people they serve and the people that we represent. So, and if we can go fifteen, twenty years into the future with a new system, I see no other way to go. I agree, we don't have the money today, but let's find a way to do it. Let's be positive and proactive.
Well, and that's what I'm doing, I'm hoping some of these agencies can step up and help.
I, I agree, but that may not be the deal. If we, if they don't, we're gonna hinder the process, the whole process.
Well, well, no, because this system will allow for us to, you know, say the Sheriff's Department, you know what? We can't give you, uh, a hundred and twenty radios, but we'll give you twenty-five. Uh, and there's some communication there with the new radios. If you want the other hundred, you need to help us out with some drug forfeiture money or, you know. Or in the years to come, we buy a few more. We don't buy them all upfront. 'Cause again, you know, unless you're ready to raise taxes two or three pennies to pay for this, then, you know, I, I don't think we can.
I'll give you one quick option. I know, and I'm not sure, and I'm sure Pete has an idea for it already, but the five hundred thousand dollars coming in for the transaction we're gonna do in June, uh, our annual payment we're gonna get on the, from that RMA deal, where's that gonna go? Where's that money gonna go, Pete? Okay, where was it gonna go? Where was the, after that? Okay, why couldn't that money be earmarked for something like this? Could it be? I, I'm not asking for a commitment, I'm just asking, could it be? Okay, that's, that's the kinda things, you know, we tend to think about these ideas. There is money out there.
I think that's what, yeah, and I think that's what Chuck said, that by doing this today, it, it gives us the opportunity to plan this out as to how we're going to do it. There's a lot of good ideas out there. I, I don't, and yeah, we could, we could ask the law enforcement agencies to pony up some drug forfeiture money, but there's some that don't have any. And so it's, it's unfair to, to burden. And so it's, it's unfair to, to burden, because they happen to have some, well, you know, you need it. Other constables do not have, uh, drug forfeiture monies. It's also unfair to, to go to the sheriff's office for every, every time we need something because they use that money for a reason. I mean, I, I think that holding them, say, "Well, if you want a hundred radios, use your drug forfeiture money." And then we fund everybody else because they don't have the money. It just, there's, there's some inequity there. But I think it's something that we do need to talk with them about. And remember that, that, that fun ninety money is, you know, they, they, they're spending it. So what's going to happen in a year that they don't have it anymore and we got a four hundred thousand dollar payment come up? I mean, we need to discuss this at another time, not so much today. Today is, do we move forward to do this and then come back with a, with a finance plan as to how we're going to, you know, to do this? Now, when you talk about the next fiscal year, are you talking about the, the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Twenty thirteen, okay. So it's coming up in this next budget. So we won't have to pay anything between now and, and, uh, September thirtieth, but come October first, we have to have that money in place.
I don't, I don't know that they're going to expect a payment that early. It's, it's just, it's...
Well, I don't know, because whether they want it in January or October, we have to budget for it in October.
And that's the objective, is to try to budget it for, for the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
Okay, so that's this coming budget coming up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and just one other thing, I, I want to address the issue about the portable radios. We're looking at two years down the road. We have to buy the radios. It, it doesn't really make sense for us to buy the backbone and not start the process completely because we'll be back trying to figure out where the, we get the money for the portables two years from now. If we don't do it now, we're still going to have to come up with that, that issue. And things may have changed. We may end up having to pay more. Right now, we're getting a deal. They're willing to take trade-ins. They're, they're willing to pro, to, to do a lot of other things to help us out and to help us move forward. And I think it's to our best interest to do that. And that's what I'm proposing.
So you're saying we don't really have an option. We have to do this?
Well, we definitely have to do something with the backbone. I think that's imperative. But I, I think it, the smartest decision is for us to do it all.
Okay.
If, if I may, Judge.
May I approve?
If I may, because of, because of some of the, uh, assumptions that we had to make on some of the radios and the programming costs and all, there may be actually enough savings in there to where we could potentially extend that first payment out beyond your next budget year or into the twenty fourteen, I guess that would be, twenty thirteen. So I mean, there's, there, there is that pu, that potential to, to be able to do that. I'd have to, to, to look at the numbers, um, once we...
Well, you know, deferring it is great. It helps us a little bit, but at the end of the day, we still got to pay it.
Plus interest.
We, we're just plus, but, so we're deferring it for a year. So, you know, I think Commissioner Sanchez made a motion to, to approve option two.
Option two, I'll second that motion.
And seconded by Commissioner Hernandez.
Before, before you go further, Judge, I have...
Subject to, um, us getting the money and legal...
Well, I was just going to say, uh, you know, the point was raised earlier about issuing certificates of obligation. And that's a fifteen-year commitment. And I don't think we have a lifespan for these units that would be sufficient to meet that obligation requirement. The other thing is, uh, that, you know, looking at this, we're, we're talking about two things. We're talking about buying equipment and we're talking about financing equipment. And so far as I know, we have not yet com, compared what financing capabilities may be offered elsewhere. And that, uh, you know, the agenda item as po, as posed speaks to lease purchase and the options. It does not, a, and of course, that is, that is discussed in the backup material. But I would want, I would urge the court to consider that we may want to go forward with a contract, depending on how you want to do it, but then take a second look at how we go, how we go about doing it and financing it. And, and then posting an item to discuss that in some detail so we know precisely what we're getting into. Uh, the other question I had is, earlier you said something about the discontinuance of the existing models, some of which we're using. And I, the legal question I had for you, if you know, is are you compelled by law for any particular period of time to support the repair and, and parts supply for existing equipment?
We, and, and I can't answer that in a legal, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney and, and a contract manager, but I can answer that we, our normal policy is that beyond manufacturer date, we try to maintain like mobiles and portables, subscribers and support for them for like five to seven years beyond, beyond manufacturer date.
Okay, so were we to, and this is of course the Commissioners' Court decision, but the, the option would be out there to support what we have for a time.
Sure.
Even after the existing equipment, you know, is, is no longer being originally manufactured anymore.
Sure. We, and we try, uh, as a corporation to, to take a look at what customer base we have out there with this, you know, these numbers of radios and try to anticipate what those needs are going to be. Um, as you can imagine, with the changing in the, uh, computer world, which radios are becoming more and more just a computer, um, that are operating on radio frequencies, um, it gets tougher and tougher to, to maintain them for any length of time beyond their manufacture date. Um, but we do, we do have a policy where we try to maintain at least, uh, five years beyond the manufacture date.
All right.
Keep in mind the, I guess the, uh, the gold elites that y'all have in service today that are, that had the lightning strike were discontinued manufacture, um, actually manufactured last year about September. And we are trying to maintain the board levels and, and trying to maintain a, enough boards and that to maintain, you know, our customer's base that's out there. But they are becoming more and more difficult to...
Well, that's why I asked whether, you know, being in the emergency communications business, I, you know, it just came to mind that there may be laws out there that requires a supplier like you to keep a supply just for the reason we're looking at right now. We, we've got a big financial decision to make. Uh, but, um, the other thing is too, I wanted the court to be aware though, that this contract, um, speaks to certain insurance requirements that would be put on the county for the preserving, uh, or, or replacement of casually lost type items. I've talked to Tom Gazdowski this morning, um, when I saw this. And, uh, and he, he believes that we are probably insured and may, uh, clearly become insured so long as we, you know, contact the people to make sure this equipment that's presently there and any new equipment that's to be required, acquired is found among the insured items on that, uh, on those policies. And the, there was another couple of things that they'll be noticed in the contract that suggested maybe we need to hammer out a, just a couple of little provisions, you know? Uh, and so if you would, i, if you wish to approve the contract short of the financing aspect...
And subject to legal's approval.
Subject to, uh, our approval, working out the insurance issues and, and whatnot. Now, let me make sure I understand. The, the proposal that's being presented today identifies clearly the equipment and the cost of it, right?
That's correct.
So we could, you know, according to the agenda item that's placed right now, which really does not speak to financing, we could go ahead and approve one of the, or the options and to purchase, okay? And then figure out what our best options are on the financing on a separate discussion, on a separate day, on a separate agenda item. Is that...
I thought that's what we were doing.
Was that, would that work?
That's true.
Would that work for you?
That's true. And just, just for your information, we, we have tried to include all the appropriate parties. Mr. Forge, Ms. Galarza, David Garcia have all been participants in, in this process. Uh, we've, we've had meetings with Motorola extensively and with our, uh, the technical expertise people, trying to hammer out something that would be amenable to, to the court. And so that's what we're providing you with. We, we want to move forward. We feel like we need to order that, that equipment because what's in place today is already failing. We, we started out with a loss of seventeen cars. We're up to nineteen cars. Two more cars have failed and they will probably continue to fail in the next few weeks or months. And at some point, the system possibly is not going to work and I, I don't want officers to be at risk.
Well, I, you know, you know, from having a few conversations myself with Beto and whatnot, it is an urgent situation. I don't think there's any question about that.
Well, Bruce, if, if there's some items that need to be worked out, why don't we just table it for our next meeting? We figure out what we need to do and then at the next meeting, we approve it. I mean, instead of...
The only thing is, is because of the urgent situation, you know, i, if, if it appears that one or more of these options is going to work and is, um, you know, viable, you know, something that we, you know, we, we're going to have to do in one way or the other, one or more of these options, I expect Chuck and Beto over here need to get moving. And, uh, and so, you know, considering that that's kind of where we're at with this unexpected lightning strike and the chance of, uh, a downed system going into hurricane system, time may very well be of the essence. So, you know, trying to figure out the best way to approach this and still conform to, uh, you know, to the, uh, the laws.
We could wait for weeks or, or possibly a month or two on the portables and mobiles, but we really need to be moving on the backbone.
Well, it's a package deal, right?
Yeah.
But I mean, ordering that stuff, if, if you approve it...
I mean, there's no doubt we're going to do the backbone. It's the radios and the extra.
Yeah, we, we want to do it all, but I mean, we're not going to order tomorrow the other stuff, but this, the backbone has to be...
So, so we can approve the ordering of the backbone because we need it for sure? Well, but Bruce, Bruce has problems with it and I don't know.
This reminds me that, that we've got to have a funding source.
Before we can...
Before we actually approve a purchase.
Well, and that, that's, there's some other legal questions I have for you, Bruce, but I figured I'd visit with you later about them. That's why I was saying we may be table.
Chuck suggests tabling it for a week at the most.
Well, I'm not talking about tabling the backbone. We need to order that stuff and, and start trying.
How much is the backbone by itself?
It's going to take six weeks to get here.
Well, d, does Motorola need us to pass an action? I mean, if they know we're going to do it, they can start doing that, or do they need the action done?
Okay, speak for them.
How much is the backbone? Just so we know what we're talking about.
The one point, uh...
One point two five.
One point two, one point two five, yeah.
One point two five nine, the first item up there.
Yeah, so I mean, we've, we've, uh, we can anticipate and do what we can to, and we already have because we know the urgency of this matter, is to get our plant and, and start getting them focused on, you know, uh, receipt of the equipment or shipping of the equipment, receipt of it. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll put it together at our, our factory and then ship it down where we know it's operational when it gets here. But, but as far as being able to actually do anything beyond what we've already done, we would, we would need a, a contract to start that process. Because it now, now we're up to the point where we need to start shipping equipment.
Well, I mean...
Let me ask one more question. I'm sorry, Mr. or Commissioner Hernandez, did I interrupt you?
Go ahead.
Uh, the, we're going through the buy board for the equipment. Are we also going through the buy board for the financing?
It would be, the actual, uh, uh, contract that we have, uh, that we presented to the, the court was, uh, through the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. And, and the actual financing would be through Motorola Corporate, or, or Motorola Credit Corp.
Okay, so am I right to say there's two separate things that Motorola does not offer financing under the buy board arrangement?
We do offer the financing under the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing.
Oh, it is?
Right.
Okay, all right. See, I, I didn't understand that.
Yes, sir.
All right.
It's definitely that, uh, the, uh, the agreement that we had in place there was our, uh, either standard or the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Agreement that allows for us to provide the county with the lease purchase.
Okay. In essence, you know, that means basically that they have a good deal.
Yes.
Okay, that, that it's been worthy enough to qualify as a financing arrangement for the Houston Galverson, you know, system over there, right?
Correct. The, the one thing that we, you know, we can, and again, is, is, is we gave you some options, financing options. I mean, there, there's obviously the opportunity to negotiate, um, you know, terms or whatever that are favorable to what the, the court's position is. So, um, we, we provided those options though based on, you know, just knowing that we were going to have to, to take and finalize a contract. And, uh, we're, we're used to, to negotiating that in a timely fashion.
Do we have to identify a funding source even though the first installment is not for two years? We would... Yeah, but, okay, yeah, but if, but if we're not going to have our first payment till two years from now, you can say anything as far as a funding source.
Well, but can we obligate ourselves for a future budget?
Well, you have, I mean, you enter contracts all the time, but I, my, my question is, do you have to identify the funding source if your first payment is in eighteen months from now?
I'm, I'm sorry.
It goes beyond our fiscal year.
I'm sorry.
Well...
But that's only if we go through the financing.
Yeah, that's our finance package.
Well, I'm assuming we're going to go through that at some point, but...
Right, but that does give you that option at the end of that, you know, at the end of the two-year period or whatever, if you decide you want to pay it off and...
Yes, I know, but my question is, do we have to identify a funding source for the twenty thirteen, fourteen fiscal year today?
And Martha is probably the best one to speak on this, but I, I, probably what you can do is, um, pledge the, uh, equipment list financing for next fiscal year.
Exactly. You can pledge anything. You can pledge...
And then we can probably come back at a later date with a...
An amendment.
Different financing plan if we find a better one.
Exactly.
I'm sure we will.
Okay.
And that's what I'm saying. You don't have to, the, the money doesn't have to be in place...
So like, next year, instead of purchasing new vehicles for the different departments, we're going to purchase radios? All right.
Okay.
That, uh, that last comment Pete just made, I think clears the air on this.
In other words, we're going to have, we, uh, we're going to identify the source, but it's not going to be in place yet because we haven't gone to that budget. You understand?
Yes.
All right.
This being, both of these things being offered, let me, let me suggest this. Because the agenda item itself did not speak specifically to financing, can we approve this contract for the equipment in whatever configuration the court wishes to do, uh, subject to financing and funding source approval to be taken up at a second meeting?
Well, I think that's what we've been talking about the last thirty minutes.
Yeah, but is that going to be enough for it to fly with their contract?
The agenda item does, does speak to that the purchase is through HGAC. It doesn't talk about the dollars, but, uh, I don't know that that's ever been, uh, a part of the process in the past.
Yeah, I think historically, anytime we approve a contract or an agreement, there is a funding source.
Yeah, but we've never had one where it's going to go out two fiscal years, basically.
Well, that, that's why I'm suggesting that we approve it subject to, okay? And, and, and with the understanding that best faith effort is going to be made to try to find the funding source and financing. And then Motorola should have, I mean, being such a good partner and all, they should be more than happy to crank up the six-week, uh, timeframe for delivering this equipment.
We'll do everything we can to make sure that we assist the county in getting back up in operational, you know.
Okay, well, that, you amend your motion to include the, the subject to's, uh, legal stuff, Commissioner? Okay?
Yes, I amend my motion.
I second that motion.
Okay. Everybody clear? All in favor? Seeing by my saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? H, discussion, impossible action in increasing the beach user fees? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Judge, Commissioners, I had sent out a, um, spreadsheet last week, um, after Commissioners' Court had given me direction to, to kind of come up with some numbers of the crossings and what it would cut, what it would create if we added the one dollar to the, uh, they, they use. Um, after speaking to Commissioner Galarza a few days ago, he had suggested I, that I just show, um, the, the June, July, August until the, to the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so that's what I passed out right now. I think in, in addition to, to the, um, to this and the backup, um, I kind of, uh, I showed you all the proposals from the city of South Padre Island and what they were willing to do, uh, to provide, um, lifeguarding at, at Isablanca and in Andy Bowie. Uh, it was substantially less than what, um, the gentleman presented last week or the last meeting. And the town of South Padre Island feels that they can start, uh, June thirtieth... Um, and the town of South Padre Island feels that they can start, uh, June 30th, uh, till the end of the, the fiscal year or the end of the season. And, um, that, uh, proposal was forty-eight thousand, one hundred. Um, so if we take off, if we just, uh, figure the, the increase from July, August and September, um, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty-one thousand, um, not the one seventy-five if you, if you remove the month of June. And this is just based on historical numbers, uh, the increase of one dollar. Um, so I'm not sure if the court wants us to, when they want us to start or if they want us to start with the, uh, one dollar increase.
Would you recommend?
Well, I, I think if we increase it by one dollar, I mean, it's, uh, we can use those funds, uh, for life, for the, to pay for the lifeguarding, also for other improvements that we need to do in the park that are beach-related. Um, and speaking to the GLO, they said that we could do that.
The GLO is okay with all this, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is, is Martha, is the auditor willing to, just, to certify some additional money so we can appropriate for the lifeguards? Martha, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so your recommendation to start, what, June 30th or July 1st?
Well, I, I think that, that we need to probably give the public notice, ample notice that we are gonna increase it, uh.
A month is good.
A month is good.
Right? And you're gonna post it outside the effective June 30th? Things are gonna, now, will that, will, will that be a perpetual fee back from here on out, or is it just for the summer months and you cut it back off?
Well, no, we'd have to include it for the rest of.
And we're gonna have lifeguards season-round?
Well, we would have them just during the, uh, summer months, which would be, uh.
So you're increasing the fees by a dollar to, to pay for lifeguards and do some other amenities, right? So the lifeguards are gonna end on Labor Day, but we're still gonna keep the dollar fee?
Correct.
I mean, I don't know how that makes any sense.
Yeah, I, I would say, let's only charge it while we're providing lifeguard service, 'cause that's the whole reason for the increase.
Exactly. That was, that, that was, that was, that was the incentive to do this.
Well, then you have lifeguards all the time. If you only need to go up a quarter, then go up a quarter to cover the cost for those three months.
So it doesn't change?
Exactly, 'cause I think it's difficult to, for the public, you know, to go, okay, from four to five and, okay, well, now we're coming down to four, back to five.
Well, the, the only thing, though, Pete, I think it, for the public, it gives them the value, hey, for an extra dollar, you're gonna have lifeguards out here versus, you know, uh, in the off-peak season, there's no lifeguard, so we're not charging you the extra. In other words, this fee is only as a result of us wanting to provide lifeguards for you and it, the money's gotta come from somewhere. 'Cause to me, what about all those people that don't ever get in the water but like to go fishing or just go hang out at the surf? I mean, they're gonna feel like, well, why should I be paying for lifeguard service when they're not gonna be here year-round?
Yeah, maybe it's in the packet, but I didn't, I didn't, the amount of revenues the dollar's gonna generate versus the cost, and so if, if that's equal, then that's fine. But if it's not, then.
Yeah, you're talking about really having a, a small windfall, um, where we're gonna make a lot more money charging this dollar fee than we are spending on the lifeguards. Now, for next year, shouldn't the lifeguard stuff start when, let's say, right, like during spring break and all that, or you're just talking strictly summertime?
Yeah, no, spring break would be a good.
I would think from spring break.
Spring break to Labor Day.
To the end of La, yeah, to the end of Labor Day or the end of September, uh, then I think that would make sense.
Well, and do we have the numbers, though, of what that costs?
Well, I think, I think you can extrapolate the number based on what you have and just.
But is, is the city gonna have those people all the time?
Is that year-round?
Well, we could, we could get them to do it year-round, um.
No, but do they have it year-round? The city?
Yeah, I don't believe they do. I don't believe they have it year-round.
See, 'cause if we're gonna buy two vehicles that are just gonna be used two or three months out of the year, yet the city might be using it, those vehicles throughout the year, then that, you know, that's a consideration, too.
Right, and, and what we wanna do is buy, um, buy two pieces of equipment and keep them at Isablanca, not share it with the city, because the city has their own Jeeps, they have their own, um, jet ski or personal watercraft, and we don't wanna be sharing with them, you know, if, if something were to happen at Isablanca that we have to go transport it from the city over to, to Isablanca. So we wanted to have it, one that was fixed or stationed there at Isablanca. So that's why I had them included, um, in here. But there's, there's other changes that we need to make, I think, to this, uh, to this plan, 'cause what they're, what they're suggesting is that they only have three lifeguards at, at Isablanca. Uh, four, four guards, but, I mean, three, four guards, but three, three state, uh, stands. So we may need more, just because of the amount of people that, that go to Isablanca.
Well, we better not have a single drowning, 'cause that's basically said, since we've had lifeguards, no one's drowned.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I think, you know, the way I think we may wanna be able to look at this is that you've got off-season and you've got peak season at the island. We charge a five dollars during the peak season, and then during the off-season, you can go back to the four dollars. And this versus twenty-five cents or thirty cents or whatever, why can't we do that?
Well, the only reason I think that is, is again, for the same reason that if people aren't in the water and using, and we don't have lifeguards there, how can we justify to them, hey, we're gonna charge you an extra dollar?
Well, you know, that, that's just, that's just part of what we do. I mean, you know, we pay school taxes, we'd have kids in school, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's the same, I think it's the same theory that, you know, everybody pays to go in and you can't control if they fish or not. I don't have a problem doing the, increasing the park fee, uh, during peak season and bringing it back down during off-peak, but whatever, you know.
I would just recommend that we run that through GLO just to make sure that we're within.
Okay, why don't we do that?
They had approved.
Why don't we do that?
Table it for them.
Yeah, do we have time to do that and ask him about, you know, kinda take back all the, the scenarios that, that court members provided right now? And I think the one is, you know, doing peak, off-peak, you know, maybe charge only twenty-five cents year-round, but I, I think it's the same thing, whether it's a dollar or twenty-five cents, I think it's the same thing.
The change thing because.
Yeah, 'cause then you got all kinds of problems.
The tellers giving out.
Even, even full dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
The only, the only issue is, do we wanna wait till July or are we gonna have lifeguards out there in June?
Well, I think the agreement was starting June 30th, no? 'Cause you wanted to have some time to post something?
Right.
So you could post something for this weekend saying effective July 1st or whatever day it is, fees will go up for one dollar from today through.
Right.
End of Labor Day or something like that.
And, and the other reason that we wanted to move it to June 30th is so that we can come up with an agreement with the city and we can put, push it through their city council.
I think, I think that's, I mean, we, we always can come back and revisit it if we need to.
When you're talking about posting, are you, we're just gonna put it out there at the entrances, or are we gonna put this in the newspaper?
Well, we could put it in the newspaper and plus post the, uh, signs at the entrance at each, each location.
Do what you think is necessary to give the public ample notice. And I think that they wanna know why, you know, lifeguards. I don't know, I don't know. I think when you post it in the newspaper, I think that's what you can pretty much.
Right.
'Cause that's what we're doing. Okay? Alright. Do I hear a motion to table?
Sure.
And then just, and proceed along the discussions that, that we've, we've just had and move forward.
Okay.
Okay? Move by Commissioner Hernandez to table for, till next meeting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, seeing by my saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Item, I, consideration authorization to add an evaluation committee to the following, uh, collection of delinquent fines and court costs.
Who's on the committee now? I'm sorry.
Um, we have a standing committee made up of Pete and, uh, the auditor and the budget officer, Javier, but two of the JPs have asked, requested to be on this committee, uh, Judge Manuel Flores and Judge Sally Gonzalez.
I don't think it's right to have elected officials on the committee. Well, you know, we, we tried that sometime back and it was, it was not good. And if they wanna appoint somebody, maybe from their staff.
This item is pertaining to their, to their, um, collection.
But why do they wanna be on the, I understand why they wanna be on the committee? To evaluate an RFP?
It sounds like they're trying to, you know, figure out, you know, no, I don't think they should be on there at all.
I don't think that's a good idea.
I think we should have somebody from the tax office on there, since they deal with this kinda stuff.
Well, this has to do with JP collection fines and delinquent costs.
Well, and look, we're looking.
But don't we have two, two collection agencies going on right now?
Yeah, that's, we're trying to get back to one.
Where, where Judge Sally is favorable to one?
Well, I don't know, but we have two collection agencies.
The reason, the reason I'm bringing up the tax office is because we're hoping, and very shortly, hopefully this budget this summer, to go to some kind of centralized, that's what I'm gonna propose, some kind of centralized collections for the JPs, using the tax office as the collector for the money.
Well, and the way we've done it is if, if it pertains to a department, we bring in that department, and that's why we, we're bringing this agenda item to you all.
But we don't bring the elected official in.
This is administrative issue, though, this is, this is the bill, this is not, the money had nothing to do with how they run, we're telling them how to run the department.
That's correct.
We can, we can keep the committee or we can add the JPs, however you all wanna do it.
I'd like to keep the committee and add somebody from the tax office. That'd be my motion.
Yeah, o- other, other than Tony.
No, other, other than Tony, yeah.
Yeah, you, you, I mean, didn't, didn't Jesse sit on a committee recently to evaluate something? I think, to give it to a JP, no, especially.
Unless you want their staff.
No, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather have somebody like, like Jesse or even Rick on the.
Well, but they're not even, that's not even their department.
Well, that, well, that makes it better because it becomes objective.
What if you put someone on there that's not from one of those two offices, just pick a random?
Yeah, the JP's a JP, I mean.
No, no, not a JP, maybe a, a staff member from one of the courts.
Well, I say, I say one of his people because they do collection, that's, that's their job. So they understand the procedures, they've, they've worked with the companies, they know the, the people being evaluated, they, they have a, a basic knowledge of procedures and, and the kind of, of, kind of rapport and, you know, have they evaluated.
I'm just concerned.
Well, the, the only concern there, though, is, you know, if, it's like David said, this is a department that we're dealing with.
You know who might, you know, if, if we wanna have a JP to do something like that, maybe, maybe have, uh, Kip Hodge sit on here since he's, I mean, he's on his way out. I mean, the, the point is to keep it objective.
Right.
And I think if you, if you bring in JP's, I mean, working with the system, they may not be objective, 'cause they've got their favorite, but if you bring somebody like, like, like Judge Hodge, who's, who's going out at the end of the year.
That sounds fair.
He'll be objective. And maybe appoint Hodge and maybe if, if you still wanna appoint somebody from the tax office, go ahead and do that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, well, we'll talk to Judge Hodge.
I, I make a motion to appoint Judge Hodge to the committee.
Second.
Can you, did you, uh, consider a tax office person?
You wanna consider one to tax office?
Well, the, the thing about putting the tax office in there, right now, they work closely with one of the people that are gonna be, um, applying, I'm sure. So, right now, one of the vendors that's applying has a contract with the tax office.
Are you insinuating they can't be?
I'm, I'm not insinuating anything.
No, but look.
I'm just saying to keep it fair.
To keep it objective.
I mean, the same thing we're doing with putting Judge Hodge there.
That's fine, let's go with that.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides to ask Judge Hodge if he's willing to serve on the evaluation committee. Uh, all in favor, seeing by my saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Item J, uh, do I hear a motion to table? By Commissioner Hernandez? Second by Commissioner Sanchez, all in favor, seeing by my saying aye, and he opposed, carries. Item K, discussion and action regarding the current standing of, of committee?
Uh, I had asked for this item to be put on. We, um, recently, we had a, a contract that was awarded on a restoration, uh, project for this building to an architect firm that was from San Antonio, and the committee in their evaluation, uh, scored that firm the highest. Um, I found out after the fact that one of the local.
After the vote.
After the vote, after the fact, that one of the local firms, um, expressed some discontent in the sense that they felt that by being a local firm, they weren't given any sort of preference, like many times we give preference, the item that we talked about earlier with Mr. Forbes, where we didn't go with the lowest one, but we went with the person that's local because they're here and they can probably provide better service. And so, um, I don't know if, if there's, when it comes to, I guess, projects of certain magnitude, besides just the evaluation committee, um, hearing and making their recommendation to us, that we possibly allow at the time of the recommendation, any of the participants or applicants, uh, to come in and, and be able to address the issue before the court, before we vote on it? Because my understanding was that that local firm actually helped and did a lot of pro-bono work, which helped us get the grant to even get the funds to do this. So in other words, they helped in a pro-bono way. In other words, they didn't make a penny of it, uh, to help the county get this, and then once we got it, even though they were pretty close and they didn't come out as the top, um, choice by the committee, there wasn't anything in there to, for consideration saying, well, i- it's a local firm and the accessibility, uh, has to do with something. And, and so, you know, my, my suggestion is, we either, on this evaluation committee, we put at least someone from this, um, court on every committee, at least one person, uh, to be part of that process, so that when we're up here and we're getting the recommendation, basically, we're making decisions on what the committee recommends as the highest and that's it. And, you know, everything that we do here on the agenda, you know, I'll study it tonight before I scrutinize it, we come out here, we talk about things, we make decisions based on informed and educated information, not just what a committee has decided to put forth to us. And so, my suggestion is we either, on every committee that's gonna have any significant consequence of, of contract, that we have somebody from this court, or at the time that the recommendation is made, that members of any applicants be allowed to come up and at least address us before we make that decision. So if we have questions or, or, you know, decisions to be made, we can do them informed.
Who, who was on that committee that decided that? Javier?
Javier, Pete, David.
The same four.
Let me.
It's either.
In hand, let, let's.
Yeah, that, that, I think that was a huge, on the record, alter, that was a huge mistake.
Well, you're on the record.
It's huge.
You can't say you're off the record, you're on the record. Let's, look, and, and I know, hold on, Javier, I know, I know what happened, I wasn't here at that meeting and I, I had the same concerns that were, that, that were asked by, by the, that particular person. Couple of things, appointing somebody from the Commissioner's Court to a committee would not be a good idea, and I think for the reason that we don't wanna elected officials making these kinds of decisions. Number two, you appoint a committee to hopefully have an objective view of, of everybody that applies, everybody a fair shot. Number three, there, we do have a, a procedure, uh, a grievance procedure, it's about, where we went through it with the, with, with the dental and all that, so there's a procedure for that. Yeah, I don't know what happened with that, but, I mean, there's a procedure to do that. I agree, that this particular individual has done a lot of, a lot of pro-bono work for the county. Number four, these are professional services, we don't even have to do an RFQ, uh, you know, for this. We can, we can go ahead and, and just, you know, take applications and the court can decide. Uh, the reason we go through this process is to give everybody an opportunity, but, and maybe we need to add another member to the committee, I would not recommend that we But, and maybe we need to add another member to the committee, I would not recommend that we add any member of the court to the committee. Just for that reason, all of a sudden, it just starts to skew it. And, and the reason being that if you, if you have these four, maybe add somebody else, we hope that, that they're making objective decisions. To, because I have the benefit of, of evaluating and interviewing everybody that comes in, I, I think it'd be a disservice to everyone, including the committee members, to overrule them when we have not had the opportunity to listen to all the people that come in, then why have the committee? Just, you know, we are the committee, then we could do it and we go through that process.
Well, then maybe we need to do it.
It could be, but.
How do we make decisions up here, uh, basically, we become a rubber stamp board, whatever the committee decides, there you go.
The committee makes the, makes, it's not uncommon in any agency. You know, you have committees that get appointed, they're your staff people, you trust them in doing the right thing, uh, and they make a recommendation and at the time you follow it, because we're not privy to all that information. We don't, we don't go through the interviews, they take, it takes a lot of time, you know, to go through some of these R F Ps or R F Qs. If the court wants to do that, then be prepared to sit here for four hours, you know, or five hours to go through interviews and go through all that. So, I mean, we appoint a committee that we would trust, are gonna make objective decisions and, and score. I have never been a, a, an advocate of, of the scoring mechanism, uh, because it is subjective. And what I have recommended is when you have these committee members, you throw out the high like they do in the Olympics. Throw out the high, throw out the low and take the median, uh, score, but we only have enough members, you know, you'd have two people making the decision out of, out of the four. So, I don't have the easy answer for it, but, but adding a member of the court to each committee to see what it is. We also have no contact clauses, you know, in these contracts where, though, they can't contact a member of the court, they cannot contact a member of the committee. So, if we wanna go back to the old way and when things were just, I didn't think were right, okay, to go that way, I think it, it's, it's a disservice. Frank?
Judge, can I add just a couple of comments for the record?
You're off, you're off the record, Frank.
I, I wanna be on the record. Uh, the consultant that was not selected, uh, actually helped us with the scope of work for the, um, uh, grant application that we submitted, but he was paid. Uh, we, we paid him on, on a fee basis, uh, through, uh, a contract, uh, arrangement that was approved by the court. Okay, so I wanted to correct that.
Okay.
Uh, and, 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 and the court should know that the, the evaluation committee's recommendation is non-binding. Uh, the final decision is, is up to the court. In the past, uh, it doesn't happen a lot, but in the past, uh, the court has overturned the, uh, recommendation of the committee for professional services. So, so you do, you do have a basis to do that.
But how do we get the information to make that decision, Frank?
What, what happens is that these things usually end up in consent and so they're not, so they're, they're easily, you know, taken in a bundle and approved with all the other items. You know, the, the simplest solution would be to make these action items and, and, and that way you would have an opportunity for the, uh, respondents to, uh, enter into the, into the discussion if they wanted to.
But Frank, we do that now when, when we pull out numerous consent items to discuss them. So, if someone wants to pull it out, what happened, I think, at the last meeting, where, you know.
Right.
Either someone didn't catch it or, or they didn't look at it, but it wasn't pulled to discuss like other items are.
Well, the, the process typically has been, whatever the committee decides, we go with.
But it's non-binding.
Yeah, it's non-binding.
I know it's non-binding, but historically, ha, since I've been here, have we gone anything other than what the committee decides?
Not since you've been here that I know of, but, but previous to you, yes.
Okay, and that's why I'm saying, I've got a complaint from someone saying, hey, I don't think it was done fair. And even though we have the grievance, the grievance is to the same committee, it doesn't come to us.
No, it doesn't. It, there's, there's multiple steps. It's not, it doesn't end with them.
Okay, but it doesn't come to us and we're the ones that.
It does, it does come to us, we're the final decision.
When did we have someone come in and grieve something? I don't remember.
On the dental, on the dental deal, uh, we had that.
Maybe I wasn't here for that meeting.
We still haven't resolved it yet, have we?
Have they come here and presented on the dental?
Yeah, but did we ever.
Was I here?
Did we reschedule it?
Well.
And, and, and just so, so the court knows, uh, you know, even though, uh, I have a lot of respect for the consultant we're talking about that wasn't selected and, and I know he's qualified, uh, the consultant that was selected is also very qualified and, 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 and meets all the, uh, criteria that was actually established for the R F Q by the state more so than us. So, so you, you ended up with maybe not the local consultant, but you ended up with a very good consultant.
There's no doubt in my opinion.
And there's no doubt that, that we didn't get the best one that was out there. But the issue then comes back when you have people that say, hey, we've participated, we've helped, we've done, and then we kinda didn't get any consideration because we're local. 'Cause the, the person that's coming from San Antonio, they're gonna take more time to get here and get back and they're not billing us extra, right?
And, and, no, well, that, that's the other point, or the last point I need to make. Right, right now, we're negotiating an, an agreement for professional services with the consultant who was selected. If, if for some reason the consultant cannot agree to these, to the fee that we've established, uh, for the scope of work that we've established, then we can cease negotiations and, and it would come back to the court and you'd be able to go back to the pool and, and, and select someone else.
Frank, the consultant that, that expressed the concerns, where, where was that individual in the pecking order in terms of ranking?
Pete? He was about number three.
Out of how many, five?
Number, out of nine.
Out of nine, he was number three? So, even then, wouldn't it, the normal protocol would go to the, would go to the second guy or the second firm?
In theory, but.
In theory, correct. Correct, correct.
Right, but earlier, with that other issue I brought up with Mr. Forbes, that was number three that got it, right? On the glasses? That wasn't one, it wasn't two, it was number three. Right, it was number three?
There's a difference here.
But there's, yeah, I think.
I, I understand, I'm just, I'm trying to make the point that, you know, if, if, if we're just gonna let a committee decide and tell us, hey, this is what it's gonna be and we're rubber stamping, are we really doing our job up here? Or do we need to really, you know, look into it more? And, and to me, if, if we're, you know, questioning purchase of a dog toothbrush on claims.
Not we.
Well, if I'm doing it, then I should be questioning claims where we're gonna prove a contract for a million or two million dollars. I mean, to me, does it make sense that we wouldn't be doing it? And, and, 'cause every step of the way and whatever item it is, I try to be thoroughly informed and make a decision based on what's best for the county. At least in that situation, number three could've come up, said, hey, this is what we did, we could've asked, oh, so you did it for free? No, we got paid. Oh, you got paid and in getting paid, you helped put this together? Yes, okay, and it was gonna be for the best person and is there any reason that you don't, you think that you should've been number one or two instead of three? But at least give them an opportunity, their day to come up here and, and explain, at least have a say.
Well, one thing, then, we can put it all as an action item. Number two, what, what I as one am not gonna do is, is, you know, I don't have a problem, uh, looking at it, you get the agenda package, you have the opportunity to look at all, you know, all the information, if you need something, you know, you're good at calling folks and, and asking for information. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, in, in ten minutes, look at them, okay, you know, this guy's done this, when they've spent hours evaluating and interviewing people, then we're second guessing, then, then why have them? Not have them, you know, we'll just be the committee.
Why not? Let's be the committee.
That's fine, but you know what? I mean, look, if you wanna, I, I'm here all the time, if you wanna have the time to do that, we'll have a meeting every day, you know, to evaluate this thing. But I don't wanna do it as one member of the court, we do it as a body, uh, but not as one member of the court, because then we're rubber stamping what you're saying.
I agree.
Or what I'm saying, or what anybody else is saying.
I agree, we do it as a body and, and we can even say for contracts that are of certain value or higher.
We can do that.
We don't have to say all of them, we can say anything over, you know.
The reason that we bring in them is to keep the objectivity away, I mean, in place.